Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is October 10th, 2018. It's 8:15 PM. I call this meeting to order. I welcome everybody that's here, who's here. And I apologize that we ran overtime in our caucus meeting. We're trying to catch up here. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Just one. Okay, go ahead. I have to say something done closed for the record. Let me do it right now. Members of the public, on our regular agenda, at the end, under old business, new business, rice hearing at the Chiaki, usually we choose to have it a open session. This time, he chose to have a rice hearing in closed session, as we already held that, so there will be no rice hearing with Chiaki in public tonight. So that is removed from that agenda. We did it in closed session.
Okay, for members of the public, there are a few seats open here on the right and also on the left. Do a roll call.
Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
The Councilperson Zaversa?
President.
Eve Park?
Yes.
O?
Here.
M. Park?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Borough Administrator?
Hello.
And Borough Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Please all rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag every night of the States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for a nation under God, indivisible, and free of any doubt.
Please remain standing for a few moments of silence. There was a police officer in South Carolina who died last week in a violent death. Lee Magnus passed away. He's a member of our business community, part of the Wendy's restaurant system. He's a great guy. I've met him a few times. And also from Mary O'Shea's cousin, Howard Schuster. Thank you. I want to also take this opportunity to express my sincere gratitude to now-former Councilwoman Carol McMorrow, who is also our former council president. Carol worked tirelessly for the community. She did a great job. She did it for everyone and not for one party or the other. It was a valiant effort on her part, and many of the things that you're enjoying today in terms of recreation department events, Community Night Out, the 5K, better recreation programs, these are all attributable to Carol and her hard work. She's been helping us with COA, affordable housing work that we're, litigations that we're working on right now as well. So I express my sincere gratitude to you, Carol. Thank you very much. Also want to mention that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please remember those who are afflicted with this terrible disease, and if you can't do anything to support monetarily or otherwise the organizations that are involved in that charity, please do so. Madam Clerk, I need the open public for our meeting's statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
I make a motion to carry resolution number 4.
We're not doing that now. We're not at that. Hold on.
Until the scheduled special meeting.
You're out of order.
I'll start.
You're out of order. The next thing on the agenda is the Borough Charity Event. The next thing on the agenda...
We're not out of order.
The next thing on...
There's Robert's Rule. We have a second on the floor.
Yes. I don't recognize you because you are out of order.
I don't need to be recognized, Mayor.
You do.
No, I do not.
I am the chairman of...
I do not.
Okay, well, hold on a second. Let me say this. We follow Robert's Rules. We all voted on that back in January at the Reorg Meeting. Robert's Rules make the mayor the chairman of the meeting. I am the mayor. I am the chairman of this meeting. If you want to be recognized, you need to be recognized by me. And I do not recognize you because you did not make that order properly. And therefore, I am going to speak to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda...
That's not what the Robert's Rules say.
Yes.
We have a second on the floor, and we should take a roll call.
No, it's not happening right now.
It's happening right now.
So folks, I want to thank everyone who donated to breast cancer...
No, no, we're taking a roll call. There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second.
You're out of order. You're not on the agenda. You're not even...
You're out of order.
Emily, I'm not surprised that you're giving your legal opinion.
Right, because this has happened before.
Many times.
Where Councilman Wu had jumped right after.
Okay.
So now you're trying to say...
It's happened before.
Yes.
Are you finished?
You're on your way, and the mayor runs the meeting. Sorry.
We're taking the roll call.
We're taking the roll call.
Yeah, we're taking the roll call.
You're not taking the roll call, are you?
There's a motion on the floor.
And there's a second.
You asked for recognition, and I'm not recognizing you now.
No, I did not ask for a recognition. I made a motion, and...
Well, that's the problem.
There's a second.
I am the chair of the meeting, and we follow Robert's Rules. And I'm sorry, and I'm sure somebody's gonna make a videotape of me saying this, but I am in charge of the meeting. Somebody has to be in charge. I'm the mayor. I'm in charge. I don't recognize you right now because, quite frankly, I want to speak about the Borough Charity Project, which is the Office of Concerned Food Pantry. We collect money...
No, we're not...
We're taking a roll call.
We collect money...
We're taking a roll call.
We collect food products, non-perishable food products, every month at our meetings. There's a drop box out front.
Excuse me, there's a motion.
There's a drop box out front, and I want to just say that...
We're taking a roll call. You can just...
You have to wait.
No.
You have to wait.
You don't know Robert's Rules.
I don't know Robert's Rules.
You don't, because I don't have to be recognized.
You do have to be...
There's a motion, there's a second, and I'm taking a roll call. It's happened before. It's happened before, and Councilman Wu made a motion, and Councilman Park made a second.
I recognize them. I don't recognize...
You did that was not the case.
I am the chair of this meeting. I do not recognize...
We could look at the video again, but that was definitely not the case.
Okay.
So...
What we could do is...
You know what? I'm surprised the...
And I want to do this, you know?
There's a roll call. There's a second.
We're gonna go into recess. We're recessing. Okay. Enough of the show. We're recessing.
Go ahead, take a recess.
To raise your voice on such a matter. We have to be respectful of each... We have to be respectful of each other.
Right.
And stop interrupting people when they're speaking. And if you're unable to do that, you need to rethink your role. Yeah. Okay. So what I wanted to do was to thank everybody for donating...
No, capable...
I wanted to thank everyone who donated to the...
You know, we have to call somebody. I think we have to call DJRS or somebody to say that this is really inappropriate. I've had several, several...
Well, why don't you leave it there and go make your phone call?
Maybe I should.
Go ahead.
Call somebody.
Go call somebody.
Because we do this all the time.
Go call somebody.
We are never recognized on this side, ever. It is totally true. That's why we have to raise our voice.
Call them like you would say, give them a hand.
All right, so...
The mayor a chance. You're gonna have your say.
Really? Really? You heard everybody say it.
Unfortunately, I apologize to the children out there. I apologize to the children out there who have heard the adults behaving poorly. Are you proud of yourself?
Actually, my children were here when you were acting poorly, so yes.
You know, it's always one-two with you, but this is not the case here. I thank everyone... I'm literally trying to do this. I thank everyone who's donated to the food pantry. It's a great effort. It's a great charity.
He's still gonna do the same thing.
Now, we're out of recess.
Yeah, he's gonna do the same thing.
He's gonna do the same thing under the resolutions.
So we had a correspondence, Eric Bernstein, an associate...
You know what? You don't recognize us and take a roll call, we may just have to leave.
Yeah.
We won't have a call.
All right. All right, folks.
Take a roll call. Take a roll call.
This is not audience participation time, folks. Thank you. We're gonna do that later, okay? I see illustrious police officers here. Thank you for coming here tonight. Look, we have correspondence from Eric Bernstein and associates. It's privileged and confidential. We had a borough...
Taking a roll call. There's a motion on... I can't believe it, that this is happening time, time, and time again.
Well, that's because I'm sitting here as mayor.
Right? Exactly. Two years, and you know how many times he's never recognized me? Never. He doesn't recognize me.
That's not true. Folks, so folks, anyone who's in order, I appreciate. Anyone who's out of order, you need to stop behaving that way.
We need to take a recess. Yeah.
All right, you guys, go ahead. We're not recessing. We continue. We...
This is unbelievable. Really.
Are you staying or leaving? What are you doing?
Right.
Are you staying or leaving?
We want to take a recess.
Go ahead. Go to recess.
There's a roll call. There's a motion on the table.
There's no motion on the table.
Because...
There's no motion on the table.
Because we didn't even hear what you were saying. Okay, so repeat yourself.
Respectfully, so we had a Borough 5K run and walk. It was in September. It was a hot day. Again, Carol McMorrow, William Wu, Donnie organized this, and I think Mark Park was involved also in some capacity. I actually ran it, so I had the best part of it. It was a lot of fun, and I didn't win. But I did okay. I want to thank all the spectators who came to the start line and to the finish line. And I also really appreciate seeing people come out of their homes and standing on their front lawns and cheering the runners on. It was a lot of fun, and I encourage everyone next year, since September, maybe we could pick a later day. It would be a little cooler to do it. So it's a lot of fun. Mr. Liberty provided music and entertainment. He did a great job, and I'm always very appreciative of everything he does as well for our community. And that's the real part of our community, is having great events and not the screaming matches that you see up here, which are unfortunate, and we need to do a little work on those in terms of respecting what we're doing. Last week, our police department had coffee with a cop. They had an event that TB... Mr. Dugan-Gore, could you turn off your ring or take your phone call outside, please? We had... The community was invited to coffee with a police officer. They called Coffee with a Cop, and it was very nice. I stopped by, and although it's kind of interesting watching people's faces walking to a bank when there's five police officers standing in the lobby, everyone kind of wonders if they should stay or not. So it was good. Good job, guys. And finally, I want to do what I call setting the record straight, because there's so much talk out there, and there's a lot of misinformation, and there's some press here as well, Korean and also the record. I see some others. So as many of you know, when I became mayor, I not only replaced the father-and-son mayor team that ran this town for 42 years, but I also inherited a staff hired by my predecessors. I am reminded every day why a 42-year run by two people damages our democracy and promotes corruption. While I am surprised with the actions... You can leave if you can't sit there in silence.
It's not your place to leave.
You can, actually. You will be removed. There's plenty of police officers here. I know they're gonna do their jobs. Okay, no yelling from the crowd. I will recognize you later when you raise your hand like everybody else. You're not special right now, okay? So while I am surprised with the actions of some of our employees and inactions by others, I am glad that I made a decision on my first day as mayor to never take any meetings with any employees alone, because I knew this would be a challenge, and it has been a challenge. I always promised to treat everyone fairly, and I did. Asking... Mr. Dugan-Gore, you have one more strike, and then you're gonna get out. Asking a police officer or police chief to get his department's overtime under control or to enforce the sick-day policy are really just fair requests from a mayor, despite what the chief's attorneys are crying about daily. I repeatedly asked our Borough employees to come to work, do their jobs, and leave politics outside of the workplace. It was a prescient request and clearly lost on some of the senior leadership of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. I always support police. I always have supported police, and I always will continue to support police. But I will not support police who are not good, fair, and just. We are working on that, and I want to make sure that the careers of our other officers are safeguarded. I also wanted to be treated fairly by them. It was a two-way street, I envisioned. I was not treated fairly. I was sued for doing my job about 10 times. Many cases have been dismissed. We have now listened to the chief discuss with senior officers to target me, to follow me, and in one recording, he even contemplated bringing outsiders to take care of me. This is America. I don't know where our chief thinks he lives, but this is America. This is our police chief and not a street gang member, but this is the way he recorded himself and some of you guys. Putting all that aside, the most vile and disgusting recordings by the chief were reserved for women in our Asian-American communities. Early on in my tenure, I suspected that some Borough employees were working against me and undermining my efforts to make Englewood Cliffs a better town. In fact, I still want it to be the best town in New Jersey. Many of my suspicions were very difficult to prove, until the chief of police did that for me. While I will not comment on the chief's mental state, intelligence, or fitness for duty, the chief surreptitiously recorded himself and other Borough employees, including police, participating in various schemes. You can draw your own conclusions as to fitness. We have a zero tolerance for workplace violence, racism, and sexism in Englewood Cliffs. Zero tolerance. On those recordings, which by the way were made under Borough's recorder, and the recorder still hasn't been returned by the chief, we hear one. The chief contemplate killing a then-elected official, Carol McMorrow. The chief participating in a discussion where Captain Murphy refers to Mark Park as a boardwalk clown whose mouth you shoot water into. We hear the chief participating in a discussion with police officers, creating disparaging rhymes with Councilman Wu's name and former Councilman Liang's name. These are anti-African comments. We hear the chief participating in very juvenile but racist eight sounds while others are talking in other racist tones, so we have eight sounds. We hear the chief ordering police officers to follow the mayor when the mayor drives around town. We hear a discussion by the chief and some Englewood Cliffs Police Department leadership to steal overtime and cover it up. Yeah, gasp, he did that. He also tells the officers how a neighboring town police chief steals overtime. So, and if you ever wanted to characterize some guy as circling the drain and having others do it with him, you're experienced when you listen to these tapes. We also hear the chief participate in a discussion with senior Englewood Cliffs Police Department leadership about bringing guys in to take care of the mayor. It's bizarre. We hear the chief encouraging officers like Lieutenant Tracy and Officer Wu to bring basis lawsuits against the town. There's actually a police vehicle video of Lieutenant Tracy speaking to a town resident about how basis his own lawsuit is. This is after he filed it. So you could open that and get it, watch it. I'll come over. I'll play it for you. Now, if that wasn't enough, it gets worse. We hear a discussion by the chief in front of senior officers and other Borough Hall employees about the anal penetration of a woman in graphic terms. Okay? This is disgusting, vile, and has no place in our society. The Borough, again, has a zero tolerance policy against workplace violence, racism, sexism, and sexually explicit language. I am asking this council to reaffirm that policy tonight, so that we can at least stand unified on one issue, which is we need to get rid of hatred. And I hope they all do so. By way of additional background, you should know that a police chief answers administratively to the mayor and council, and operationally, a police chief answers to the county prosecutor, who in turn answers to the New Jersey Attorney General. In our situation, Chief Chaffey answers to the acting Borough... to the acting Bergen County Prosecutor Dennis Kahlo, who in turn answers to the Attorney General Gabeir Graywell, who happens to be the former Bergen County Prosecutor. I believe Mr. Kahlo has had the same recordings we are all listening to since the beginning of August, so he is aware of the same things that I am aware of and that you are aware of, but nothing has happened. I believe that the Attorney General Graywell is also fully aware, but nothing has happened. In closing, the chief's lawyers keep saying that the death threat was a joke. What about everything else? Were those all jokes too? How many jokes can one police chief have? You know, in fact, I think the chief and his attorneys are now becoming jokes themselves, and they're trying to make fools of anyone who's taken their side in the system itself. Again, I have always been supportive of police and law enforcement, and will continue to be. I'm not supportive of corruption or corrupt police. I've been portrayed as going after police. I'm not. Really, I'm not. I see things, I deal with them, I refer them to their proper authorities. I'm not here to judge. I'm just here to flag, and that's what I'm doing. Okay, so that brings us up to date and where we're at. And having said that, I wanted to ask James Barbario, our Borough Administrator, to bring us up to date on property maintenance discussions. There's some things that just keep coming up over and over, and I just want the public to understand that we are dealing with property maintenance in a, you know, logical manner and just going through everything. So if you can, just say a few words, Mr. Barbario. Thank you.
Sure. I'll read into the record what I... The mayor and I on September 28th met with Nick Melphy, our construction zone officer, and asked for best of the property maintenance officer at the Borough Hall to discuss concerns from residents at the special meeting on September 26th. And the number one... the first concerns were, and I'm gonna read them right down the line here with the abatements. One was 460 Sylvan Ave, Sylvan Dental illuminated light on building. The illuminated light on the building was denied on April 5th, 2018. They went ahead anyway and put the lights throughout the building in violation. On October 1st, 2018, the Borough Property Maintenance Officer personally spoke to the person in charge, because the doctor was not in at the time. He explained that the lighting was put in illegally, and that the lights needed to be shut off and needed to be removed. The person told him she would shut the lights off and would talk to the doctor as soon as she returned from vacation. Property and maintenance will be following up this week. Oversized real estate sign on 467 Sylvan Ave. Multiple calls started on October 1st with no answer until October 5th. Property Maintenance Officer explained... oh, excuse me. Officer explained that the signage was too large and needed to be reduced. There will be reinspection this week. Multiple properties on the south end of town on Sylvan Ave. On September 28th, property maintenance officer visually inspected the property in sight. There were no abandoned cars, no trailers, no landscape trucks. The grass was cut. The buildings were maintained in good condition for empty buildings. 41 Sylvan Ave, signage in front window. Mario and Maria shot. October 1st, warning was sent out about the signage in front window, and it has been abated and has been removed. UPS store, multiple signs in window. The property maintenance officer on September 28th, 2018, explained to the worker that the signage needed to be removed. She was only an employee. He will be following up with a certified letter to the owner. 9W Deli, the flag banners across utility poles. Property Maintenance Officer on October 3rd spoke to the owner. The owner said he removed the flags. Flags have been removed. The second, Mr. President, that came up with concern, Sylvan Road Property Maintenance. The property maintenance officer said he travels these sites every day when in town. If there are any issues, they have been dealt with. If there are issues he's not aware of, he would like to be informed immediately, or he can inform me as well. Another concern was the resident was Sage Road Commercial Property. The concern is, where is this retention pond? The property maintenance officer said that during the construction, there was a field underneath the parking lot and pump station throughout the property that are dealing with the water. He thinks this question should really be addressed to the engineer. So I contacted the engineer, and it was confirmed that the retention pond is under the lot, 980 Sylvan Ave, northwest corner of Sage Road and 9W. To the right of the building is the NJDEP Water Quality Detention Basin. To the left of the building is a larger underground detention basin. The entire site, including the water quality basin, building roof, and parking lot drains into the larger basin. Larger basin overflows into the Johnson Ave Storm System. Mazur, our engineer, inspected all of the above, and it wasn't installed as planned. One of the questions was how many violations were issued 2018. Throughout the 2018, there were 71 violations issued, and 66 have been abated. There were five remaining properties that have upcoming deadlines to address the violation and to comply. These violations include residential and commercial. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So the genesis of that report was we had a citizen come up last month and tick off a few of those items for us, so I just want to make sure that we address those, and I think to our satisfaction, they've been addressed. Just keep on top of the ones that are still open, please.
I will.
Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Let me recognize you, and then just come up to the table here beyond the wall and speak to that microphone. State your name and address. Anyone from the public?
Adonis Morfes, 26 Charles Street, Englewood Cliffs. Number one, I'd like to thank this gentleman here on my right, because he did respond to my complaints. The report that your maintenance... whatever you want to call him, the maintenance officer, he doesn't see abandoned vehicles? If you go by there right now, they're there.
Where?
On Chaffey's properties.
What? I don't know Chaffey's properties. What?
From... It's north of the steakhouse.
Okay.
Okay? All those properties...
They have abandoned vehicles?
They have abandoned vehicles, and in fact...
Did you call the property maintenance officer before coming here tonight?
I already told them.
Okay.
I had pictures. For three years, they've been doing it. Nothing has changed. The man didn't see anything. The roof is coming down.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I spoke to the property maintenance officer today. He told me he's been there several times. He's not seen any abandoned cars. Well, then he needs a doctor to take care of his eyes. That's okay. Because everybody else sees it. I know. Tony, here's what we'll do. Give me the pictures. I know you gave me pictures. Why don't I take you there tonight? My car? Oh, what if we finish? So this way, you don't need a picture.
Then you have to take me out for pizza.
Oh, thank you for pizza and a beer.
But here's the point. I spoke to him, but what I will do is I'll send for me to...
Number one, his trucks from his alarm company are parked on grass. He has seat tenures in the back filled with crap and shit, excuse the French. The place has abandoned vehicles back there that haven't been moved in three and a half years. I want to know what the man saw and how he saw it. Now, did the gentleman read a code? Because you can't have a sealed building in Englewood Cliffs. You can't have a building, a commercial building, with the roofs falling apart. I don't think the fire department will allow you to have gas, electric, in a sealed building and water. You paying this guy 20 grand a year, 40 grand a year, 50 grand a year? Give it to the Boy Scouts. It's a better shot.
I'll, I'll...
I mean, I'm being honest. I mean, it was embarrassing.
Here's what we're gonna do.
Now, embarrassing, throwing it in my face.
We'll do.
No cursing in public.
I'm sorry.
Even though we set a bad example up here on the right.
Listen.
Tomorrow, can you please just go down there?
I'll go down. I'll sleep in, it's coming in on Friday as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Okay? That's...
All right, problem solved. You're gonna go.
I'm happy about one thing.
I have no arguments about that, but when you tell me what the guy didn't do.
Okay, all right.
I'll handle it.
Anybody else from the public? So, folks, for fire code reasons, we can't block this door. There's some seats up front. We just have to keep it open. And, um, you want to put some people in there?
No. You're not caring here, but you can't block the door.
Can't block the door, Mr. Wunsch.
You are. You are. The door's not blocked.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, Gail Aronberg, 51 John Street. And before I start, I just want to let you know that I've written something, but I may leave early. And it's not because I'm being disrespectful for anybody, but it's because I'm really sick. But I wanted to get here tonight, so I'm just trying to say if you see me leave, if I don't stay for the whole meeting, I'm not trying to disrespect anybody's person or their point of view. I don't come to meetings anymore, because I cannot take the conduct of the people in town. The screaming, the riot-like atmosphere, sitting on the floor stomping hands and feet. Yes, this did happen once. It was one of the last meetings I came to.
Hold on a second. Ms. Park left her cell phone on.
That was actually my son's. I had it fixed today, I totally forgot.
Very professional. This riot-like behavior, I don't expect from adults or from any age person. It was with great disappointment, sadness, and even anger that I am here tonight. I have lived in this town for over 30 years, and have tried to be involved. I've been in the PTA, PTA President, helping recreation, working in the schools, both as a school nurse, and finally on the Board of Ed. On Tuesday, October 2nd, a friend from another town gave me the Star-Lazare and told me there was something, an article about my town in it. I don't usually read the papers anymore, I'm not on social media. Then I turned on Channel 12, and I saw it reported. Needless to say, I was disgusted. Many people in town continue in actions that are inappropriate and harmful. Children bully children, adults bully children, and adults bully adults. Being too civil to one another is dead. We can agree, but we have to be polite. Agree to disagree. This is a subject I have talked about several times at previous meetings, but to no avail. We continue to do and say things that are harmful and hateful. How an official, a man of power in our town, the police chief, could say such things, even if he was joking, is not funny. It is appalling, unethical, and unprofessional. I would like to kill her. Shame on anyone for saying that, and shame on you. Psychological damage can last forever. I know people who were bullied as children, and this damage has lasted into adulthood. Shame on the media for not covering this situation better. The news has sugarcoated this incident, as well as the legal system, the courts. Just like the concert in Central Park a few weeks ago, where there were 60,000 people and someone shouted, "Shooter." They immediately got the musicians off the stage, but a riot occurred, a stampede. The media reported that there was not any serious injuries. I guess serious meant no one died. They didn't interview the people that were trampled and thought they were gonna die. They didn't interview the people that went to the hospital with serious injuries. And weeks later, some of these people still are mentally, emotionally, and medically harmed and scored. How the Bergen County official who made, how about the Bergen County official who made racist remarks? He is out of a job. Was he accused, was he joking? Why do we have different standards for different people? Everyone should be treated the same. Today, I heard on the news, a teacher tweeted, "Who will kill, take one for the team and kill Kavanaugh?" Was she joking? Well, she resigned from her job. These are not jokes. Shame on the people of this town who state this was nothing but a joke. If this happened to you, you wouldn't be laughing. You would be terrified and demand action. But it didn't happen to you. It happened to someone else, so in your eyes, it's okay. There were also sexual and racial remarks made. How unprofessional. Shame on our town and officials for not condemning these actions, no matter what party you are lying to. If a child or adolescent in school said remarks that were made by our police chief, there would be an investigation, a psychological exam would be required. I knew her mother, who got a phone call from her child's school, and was asked if there was a gun or guns in the house. She asked why. Well, her child said that he believed in the Second Amendment, the right to own a gun. There was no gun, it was a belief he had. Does that mean you have to go after somebody? If people in the position of high office, as our police chief, who has a gun, commit jokes about killing someone, again, unethical, unprofessional behavior. This is why our town and society and the country's in such a mess. Lack of ethics, lack of caring, lack of respect, lack of looking at our town as a whole, rather than dividing it. Look at yourselves and see what you are teaching the younger generation, to be uncaring, out only for me, out for what benefits me and not the people of the community, how to be hateful. The younger generation learns all this because adults and their parents are teaching this to them. Wake up, Englewood Cliffs. Bring back politeness, caring, and being civil to one another. Remove hate from your heart. Speak out for the right things for the community, the town as a whole. The United States was and still is a melting pot of people of all types. We should be a town of togetherness, wholeness, not of division. I'd like to thank Carol McMahon for her dedication and service to our town. She's given much of herself. So thanks to Carol. And lastly, I remind you of something written during World War II. First, they came for the communists, but I was not a communist, so I did not speak out. Then they came for the socialists and the trade unions, but I was not neither, so I did not speak out. Then they came for the Jews, but I was not a Jew, so I did not speak out. And then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? No, we can't do that, sir. No, no. One at a time. One at a time. You're all, you're all welcome to speak, one at a time. You're not allowed to block the doorway. You're blocking the doorway. You are blocking the doorway. You are still blocking the doorway. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. My name is Ben Todd, and I'm a resident of Riverdale. I work here for the Police Department of Englewood Cliffs. I'm here as a co-chairman of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, PBA bargaining unit, and I'm here in a representation capacity on behalf of all officers of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, with the exception of the Chief of Police. We don't represent him. Tonight, on behalf of all of our members, I would like to read a statement prepared by the PBA on what the PBA understands to be a matter of important public concern. Statement relates as follows. The PBA declares that bargaining is severe disappointment, and this council's majority of leadership is systematically to drive a wedge between the governing body, the public, and the police department. It's clear to us that the mayor believes that he has unilateral control over the town and its police department. A Bergen County Superior Court Judge recently issued an injunction prohibiting the mayor from taking any unilateral action usurping the authority of the Borough Council. We have seen Mayor Cranjak refuse to negotiate in good faith by personally and interlocutorally terminating negotiations and ordering our representatives to vacate the town hall. We've seen him attempt to unilaterally enact orders and policies within the police department, and most recently, we have seen him endeavor to terminate three of our members, Captain Regan, Captain Murphy, and Lieutenant Hankman. Forgoing commentary on the matters for which they are charged, these men and all of our members are entitled to the due process of an impartial and fair investigation conducted by the unauthorized entity. These men are entitled to fundamental fairness and process free from political bias. Mayor Cranjak is not an internal affairs investigator, and he is not an agent of the Office of the Prosecutor. Mayor Cranjak is also not the appropriate authority in this borough. Speaking perhaps to the more troubling issue we take issue with legal counsel, which can test what appears to be unlawful behavior, as recently found and enjoined by a Bergen County Superior Court Judge. This unit will continue to fight for the rights of its members and will not be dissuaded by acts of intimidation or retaliation or violations of the law.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? Will you join me? Will you and the PBA join me? Will you and the PBA join me in condemning workplace violence, racism, and sexism? Will you join me in that?
I'm sorry, I was here for a statement. We have a meeting on that.
You can't decide on your own toes if so long as you don't kick us out of Borough Hall again, we're here to negotiate fairly. We will speak with you. Same time you want. So you can't, you can't decide if you're against racism, sexism, and workplace violence? All right, so for the record, I asked the PBA rep if he would join me in condemning workplace violence, sexism, and racism, and he couldn't answer that question. Mr. Wunsch, you're blocking the doorway again. Please, you need to open the doorway. There's seats here.
Look at this doorway. You see there's plenty of room. Okay? You keep bringing this up for no reason other than to be a fool.
Okay.
Get down! It's too hot in there. That's gonna work, okay? Get down! You're a wretch! Sit down! Sit down! Sit down! Get out of the way!
Sit down. That's the Alvin on the tape, by the way.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's on the tape.
We're gonna pause for a minute here.
So, can we hear what you want?
I'm on the tapes. I'm gonna be okay. Stop! Now stop! Michael, stop!
Please remove him.
Please remove him.
Remove him, please.
He's wearing workplace clothes.
Remove him, and do not let him back in here tonight.
The chief references Greja Hates Cop. No, Greja hates him. Get off! Greja, get off! Out of the building.
So, out of the building. That's not out of the building.
Why is she speaking from the audience?
Lieutenant Wyper, he has to leave the building. Is he going through the police department? He went to the left. He doesn't belong in there. He's in the police department, he does not belong in there. All right, for everybody who's wondering, that was a member of the New Jersey Bar. That's a member of the New Jersey Bar behaving that way. Because that's, that's Albert Wunsch. And that's the way things work. Is he out of the building, sir?
He's not, sir.
Mr. Wunsch.
Wunsch, he went that way. He needs to be escorted out of the building.
He's leaving that.
He's got a warrant.
All right, that's unacceptable behavior. I'm sorry, folks, but this is endemic of what happens after 42 years. I see the former mayor here. Would you like to say anything about corruption, or racism, workplace violence, anything like that, sir? No? You're not gonna say anything tonight? I didn't think you would.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard? For everybody standing outside, there are seats available in here now. You're welcome to just join us in here, it's easier. I see several of the chief's attorneys back there. You'd be more comfortable sitting down, perhaps, Mr. Altieri?
I'm very comfortable here.
Okay, I also see the chief's criminal defense lawyer back there. You're welcome to come in here as well. Yes, sir.
David De Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place, Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey. I would like to respectfully ask the mayor if he had any government experience prior to taking the position of mayor.
What else would you like to ask?
I'd like an answer to that question.
This is not an exchange. I'll answer your questions if I want to. Right now, I don't want to.
Well, you sort of cross-examined and, you know, hung people without having response.
Really? I asked the PBA rep if he's opposed to workplace violence, and he couldn't come up with an answer. I asked him if he was opposed to racism. He couldn't come up with an answer. I asked him if he was opposed to sexism. He couldn't come up with an answer. I guess we'll go back and ask Toffey what he should say.
We have a situation in town that is very, very serious. We should welcome affordable housing, but unfortunately, the ball was dropped. And the ball was dropped, and it has risked our town getting 600 units on Sylvan Avenue, which is going to cause huge disruption and tax hike. It's great, we should have affordable housing, but the affordable housing, the reason why it's coming into town is because of the inexperience of this mayor and the distraction that he's had and the obsession that he's had with the police department since day one. This mayor has been, and look, watch, or I encourage everyone watching this, to look at the past tapes. Our mayor has been critical of how much our police officers earn vocally. He has complained about their salaries, which is highly inappropriate. The place to negotiate is at the negotiating table, it is not in public. That's why I asked if you had experience as a Borough Administrator or any kind of experience, because it seems like you came into the position with zero experience, and you did not reach out to, as you just said, insinuated, the corrupt people that have had experience for 40 years.
I'm glad you agreed with that.
If you did, I do not agree with you. I do not agree with you when you say corrupt. Let me put that on the record. Had you, and had Mr. Prino had lunch, and had this new administration started off with a spirit of respect, your sign thy speech really kind of mapped it out, that you are basically the king, and that people need to come to the pinstriped mayor and bow to be heard. Yes. So, fact or fiction, I heard behind me, I would, you know, a little levity. What's going on in this town, and I've said it before, is like a Shakespearean drama. We have someone in the back with a camcorder who has been probably the root cause, I think, as her husband seemed to have been passed over for chief many years ago. That's caused resentment all along, and unfortunately, taken, you've taken, I'm gonna...
I know you rehearsed. Get back on track.
I know, I know rehearsed. I don't need to rehearse.
Get back on track.
So, this mayor has signed on to this vendetta, creating a horrible working atmosphere. I feel sorry for all the police officers in this town. They should be commended for doing good and protecting all residents in town. They earned, and they bargained, and they earned, and they deserve every cent. Longevity. Some officers have been here for a very long time, and they've been criticized for making high salaries. If you work for a company for a long time, unless you put a cap on it, and that you do at the negotiating table. Again, Mayor Cranjak inexperience. Mayor Cranjak unfeeling. Mayor Cranjak bully. Mayor Cranjak not embracing recognizing people with mental disorders. Mayor Cranjak... And respecting them and trying to get help for the people that have mental disorders in this town.
Let Mr. De Gregorio say his piece, please. Thank you, folks. Let him say his piece.
In addition to that...
It's important that we hear both sides.
Absolutely.
As wrong as this man is, let's listen to him. As wrong as this man is, let's listen to him.
Okay, I'm glad you got a laugh, and that's okay. If a person in your position wants to belittle, that's okay. It just shows more of who you are, not who I am. I stand proud, I'm a good citizen of town, I voted for Mayor Cranjack, let me remind everybody, and I am disappointed that he didn't reach out, because he could have saved our town 600 units. That's going to change the face of this town. I know that the fellow from Normandy is sitting in the back. He could sit down and be reasonable with the police, but this mayor does not know how to be reasonable, he does not know how to be humble, and that stems from an utter sheer insecurity and a lack of experience in the position.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you for your comments, sharing your feelings, we appreciate that. Anybody else?
Tell me. Tell me.
Anybody, anybody else? Okay. For those people watching this at home, this is a monthly occurrence for Mr. De Gregorio comes in and pontificates. I can't see, there's a hand behind you. It's okay, folks, he's entitled to his opinion. It's fine. We encourage both sides to speak.
Just wanna ask you one question.
Can you state your name and address, please?
David Civan, 129 Hollywood Avenue, Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey.
Can you spell Civan, please?
C-I-V-A-N.
Thank you.
What university did you finish after your law degree? I'm just asking, I mean, you know, if it's personal, you don't have to answer me.
I don't have to answer anything. Why does it matter?
Oh, it matters, matters in, you know, what I'm about to discuss.
What did other mayors have? Did you question any of the other mayors?
You have to, you can't do that, sir.
Sir! Sir!
Please, let him speak, let the citizens speak.
Sir!
It's okay, he could ask whatever questions he wants.
Well, if it's a personal matter, you don't have to, you know, address the matter, because, you know, I'm gonna bring it to a.
I didn't understand your question, the way you asked.
Well, I just wanted to know what university you finished.
Right, what else do you want to say?
You know, I got a lot to say. I've been over here since 1972. I'm on my 46th year in this town. I watched houses go up, I watched streets go up from dirt roads, I watched a lot of things happen in this town and where it stands today. I actually had to quit high school when I was 17 years old to go run after my father's business to pay four mortgages. My mother died nine years ago. A lot of people told me, why ain't I selling the house and getting out of here? I all told them. I have a lot of love for this town, and that's why I'm still here. Apparently, you've come into this town, let's say, 20 years ago, but you haven't been over here a lifetime like I have, and you took over this town in not seeing how this town was actually made by lumber, by streets, by landscaping, by day in and day out, from the 60s, the 70s, and the 80s. I witnessed it all. You come into this town, you become mayor, you start picking on everybody, you send me junk mail to my house every day, okay? More and more stuff coming about Mike Chiaffi. Let me tell you something about Mike Chiaffi. That man saved my father's life, and I'll never forget that, two times, okay? I asked you what university you finished, because whatever university you finished in becoming an attorney, you never read this book. That's the Holy Bible, my friend. You need to read that book. That's the book that you have to read. I'm giving you that book.
Can you pick up the papers?
I'm giving you that book, okay? From my heart to you.
Okay, read John 3:16. To, just to answer the gentleman's question, who, he wants to know my background, so I'll tell everybody my background. I went to Fordham University, College of Business Administration. I met, I met my wife there, my freshman year, we commuted together, we met in the parking lot. I was an accounting major, I graduated, I took the public accounting exam, passed all four parts, and went straight to law school, went to Fordham Law, passed the New York Bar and the New Jersey Bar. Read a lot of the Bible, read a lot of the Koran, read a lot of other religious books, because we were required to have an open mind at Fordham between our philosophy courses and our theology courses. But what we also learned was that facts matter, and as much as you want feelings to be the truth, and feelings to be facts, the truth is based on facts, not on your feelings, not on consensus, not on mob rule. Anybody else wishing to be heard? And I have my own Bible, so I don't need yours, you can take it back. Yes, ma'am.
I moved here a couple of years ago, so I'm newly new to the town. I moved here because this is a nice neighborhood, makes me feel safe, and there's population of Asian here, because I feel, you know, I can really be related to, and it's always a very nice neighborhood to me. Until this year, I heard everything, and I feel very furious about what I heard, especially the racism against, you know, the community here and against people here who are not, you know, we were not born here, but we want to, we want to be treated the same, we want to be respected. Even I don't speak very fluent English, even I have accents, I don't want to be laughed at. I want, also, I heard some people here, even in the council, they actually support those kind of person. So what people like me will feel, I just moved here, I'm Asian, and I've been laughed at, you know.
You're wrong, you shouldn't be laughed at. And I will actually tell you, I'm the son of immigrants, my parents didn't speak English either, I went through what you're going through in some ways as well. I learned English when I went to kindergarten. My wife is an immigrant from Italy, she came here when she was 10. This is the American dream.
Exactly, so I hope my dream is not going to be broken here, and I hope all the council members will be united and not just want to achieve their own political goals and to sacrifice other people's benefit or whatever, the things that we want to achieve. We have to be one town, and everybody has to look into everyone living the town's interests, not just looking to their own interests for their political reasons. If they want to run for the next mayor, if they want to be the senator of the state, that's fine, we can support you, but you don't sacrifice our interests to achieve that. We're one town.
Very well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
First, I would like to say that Mr. Gregorio is exactly on target. The reason that we have a lawsuit in town for 600 affordable housing units is because
That's false.
You.
It's not 600.
I'm speaking, I have the floor, is because you and your planning board took the eye off the ball, you have only cared about harassing the police department and harassing the police chief. Anything that has happened after that is because you have driven it. You, you have created this situation, you have created the affordable housing situation, you have created the situation with the police. This was not anyone else's doing but your own.
The affordable housing situation started in 1974, when I was nine years old.
Excuse me, you know exactly what I'm saying. The planning board rejected a stellar application for a corporate office building at that location, and because that application was rejected, they filed instead an affordable housing lawsuit. That was not their original intention. No one spends $1.5 million on an application because they want some stupid little subdivision, that's your cover story. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. How stupid do you think people in this town are?
How do you know their number? How do you know how much they spend?
Everybody knows.
How do you know?
It's published, it's been published, it is out there.
Hmm, mhm.
So.
Okay.
Your harassment of the police department and your harassment of the chief is what has led us to where we are today.
Okay, alright. Will you stand with me in zero tolerance for racism?
Excuse me.
Workplace violence, sexism, will you stand with me in that?
No one is in favor of that, and the police are not. You're just trying to dissuade the discussion, you're trying to undermine people's comments by changing the conversation. The tapes are only being discussed as you want them to be discussed, you are letting it out out of context as you see fit.
Is there a good context for racism? Is there a good context for sexism?
There is no one listening.
Is there a good context for workplace violence?
And hearing the entire tape.
Tell me that context that would make that plausible.
In whole context. You are controlling the narrative of those tapes.
Is there a good context for that?
There very well could be.
There's a good context for racism? There's a good context for racism?
I didn't say that. You are putting work in my mouth.
I'd love to hear that.
That you're bullying me, just like you're bullying everyone else, but I don't stand for it. Now, the main point that I'd like to make is, there is a motion and a second on the floor at this council meeting. I am very, very well-versed in Robert's Rules of Order. They do not have to be recognized. You are obligated to take a vote when a motion and a second is on the floor. It is not up to you to recognize them. A motion and a second is on the floor, and it must be.
You're wrong, you're wrong.
I am not wrong. I am 100% well-versed in Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you.
And you are wrong.
Thank you, I don't know what version you're reading, but you're reading.
I'm reading the correct version, I don't know what version you're reading.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. First, I'd like to pick up on a point that the police made, which is that they are entitled to, which is that they are entitled to due process. It's time for Councilman Versa, Councilwoman Ellen Park, and Councilwoman O to stop playing games and hire a hearing officer so the officers can get the due process to which they are entitled. At the court hearing on Friday, Judge Frischa made it crystal clear that the allegations against Chief Chaffee need to be addressed, not ignored. During the hearing, Judge Frischa referred to the very serious and severe allegations, very concerning and serious allegations, the outrageousness of the allegations, the seriousness or outrageousness of the alleged allegations, egregious allegations, how egregious the charges are, and the serious nature of these allegations. She clearly didn't think it was a joke. Judge Frischa also stated that the allegations here have been existing for not weeks, not days, many months. I'm not sure why this action was taken, when it was taken, and not long ago. I'm not quite sure why there has been no action taken by the borough. Unfortunately, the residents of Englewood Cliffs do know. It's because Councilman Versa, Councilwoman Ellen Park, and Councilwoman O placed their loyalty to their political allies ahead of their legal responsibilities to the residents of Englewood Cliffs. I'd also like to address the issue of corruption. I've lived here a long time, long enough to remember a lawsuit over the 800 Sylvan property about an expansion, in which people voted when they shouldn't have voted, and the borough got sued, and the borough paid $375,000 to settle that lawsuit. And I have a letter from Carter Carston, there were other settlements too, but they're not public, so we don't know how much the total cost of that fiasco was. And I also like to point out that more recently, we had houses built on an unpaved street. The houses were built by a former Democratic Council candidate. And now we have people who bought that property, including the woman who screamed out about the corruption comment, who are unhappy because they might be assessed to pave that street, which should have been paved at the time the building went up. I'd also like to point out that we've been here since 1979. When we moved here, the mayor's name was Parisi. It's been Parisi for almost the entire time we've lived here. Since 1979, which was, I believe, five years after the affordable mandate, housing mandate came down from the New Jersey Supreme Court, under 42 years of Parisi, not a single unit of affordable housing was built in Englewood Cliffs. So I'm really tired of hearing people say that the mess at 800 Sylvan is the Cranjack administration's problem, and it's the Cranjack administration's fault, because it's not. Forty-two of the last 45 years, all of which were under an affordable housing mandate, were Democratic administration headed by someone named Parisi. So perhaps if they had had foresight, they would have done something about it. I'd also like to point out that John Schapezi, one of the people involved in the earlier 800 Sylvan litigation, put in an Oprah request for the documents on the borough's COA a month before the planning board hearing started. So I think that there's a lot of questions about whether they ever intended to put in an office building, or whether they were just looking for the largest possible subdivision so they could squeeze the largest possible number of housing units on there. Finally, I'd like to bring an apparent misuse of the borough's intellectual property to your attention. There is a Facebook page called Protect Englewood Cliffs, which currently features a letter to Democratic Council candidate Debbie Sabari. This is the Facebook page. Should look familiar to everybody, because it looks just like the borough's website. And it clearly appears to be an attempt to mislead people into thinking it is an official borough web Facebook page, which it is not. And I'd like to know how the owners of Protect Englewood Cliffs obtained this top part, which looks like it came right off the borough's website. And I think the borough needs to take action to make sure that it is crystal clear that this is not the borough's and it is a political, a democratic Facebook page masquerading as a borough Facebook page.
Alright, so that's known as confusion. So that's known as confusion in the marketplace, and we'll take a look at that. We actually have, first time we have a dog here tonight. Maybe we should all bring our dogs, and we'll get along better. Yes. Do you have anything like that? A button?
I don't know, too.
Thanks, Rick. I'm sitting. You ready? I'm ready, I should. So. It's the man, yeah. For people standing, there are seats open. You're welcome to come in.
My name is Carol McMillan, and I live at 489 Summit Street. And I will say that I'm a little, I actually, when I saw all the police officers here, I had some hope that they were coming up to the microphone and they were going to denounce everything that they have been reading in the papers and state that they don't agree with what they are reading. I want everybody to know that I have the utmost of respect for police. I always have. My husband is the retired deputy chief of police, who served this borough annually for 42 years, even though, for the record, Eversa, Ellen Park, and Gloria O, again, cannot look up and pay attention when we are talking about something extremely important. And I ask all of you, there's nothing that you're doing right now that is more important than what I am going to say to you and read aloud.
Before you, folks, I need you to remain silent.
My two oldest boys, both enlisted into the Coast Guard. The older one is still in the Coast Guard. The middle one had to leave on a medical discharge, and our youngest son is presently in his second year as a police officer. And my husband and I are very proud of all three of our boys. And I can tell you right now that what I'm gonna be reading to you here is not something that would ever happen in my house or any of my, our children would ever be engaged in. Now, for the record, I just want to clarify, when Albert Wunsch was here, Albert Wunsch was Dylan's middle league coach. I have always held Al, my husband and I, in the highest of regard. And I'm truly disappointed at what I witnessed here tonight. He was the Albie that was referenced on the tape. I have not heard his actual name, I want to clarify that, so there's no misunderstanding. But the chief of police referenced him as Albie, and anybody that's been in this town long enough knows that usually, Albie is the nickname for Albert Wunsch. I look forward to hearing him testify, be deposed, whatever happens in proceedings, whether here or somewhere else, if he is that Albie and if the chief of police or what he said is correct or not. Okay, I'm going to be, and also, Ellen Park, Ms. Rosario, for the record, I believe Ellen Park has a conflict. I've noted this several times. She's suing me. She wants to sue me again. And she is continually violating her ethical obligation to accuse when she's being told to accuse.
So a conflict regarding the chief?
Regarding me.
Regarding you.
Yes. It doesn't matter, you're for counsel. You just, you look for the counsel who's gonna give you the answer you want. So I'm just putting that on the record.
And for the record, I stated it before, I discussed it with...
I can't hear you with the microphone.
I'm sorry. I discussed it with Councilwoman Park, and I told her that she sued you and threatened to sue you, and it constitutes a conflict of interest. She has declined to recuse.
Okay, so, as long as it's on the record. I'm gonna be reading some portions of what is known, well, my words, my words, I'm gonna say that, of tape 102. The date on this tape, by the chief's own words, is January 12th, 2017. And for those of you in the audience, I just want you to know, I listened to all the tapes that were turned over. There appear to be many tapes that are still missing. And these tapes that were turned over appear to have started being recorded as early as about a month and a half after the mayor and I took office. So he and I were being targeted from, we were only in office a month and a half. And I just want everyone in the audience to know that, and whoever's watching at home. So on tape 102, there's a portion, it's about three hours long, this tape. This is a small little piece, and there's many pieces on here that will eventually come out. This conversation took place after a budget meeting that I was in attendance with Councilman Wu. I believe the mayor was there at that meeting, I didn't write that down, but it was a budget meeting upstairs. And it was with Chief Choffey, Captain Regan, and Lieutenant Henkelman. After they finished the budget meeting, we said our goodbyes, and unbeknownst to me, at that time, they went downstairs to the tax office, where they had conversations with Paul Duffy, Janice Romano, and Fran Marinuzzi. At 2:12:09, the chief opens up conversation. And I believe all of you have references in your charges, because you received the charges on September 12th, and then subsequently you received more about two weeks after. And it was noted in a footnote on those charges that it was the best transcription or reference that they could make. I think the exact, hold on. The exact footnote noted was, "The materials in quotation marks are taken from listening to the tape recording and are written herein as accurately as possible." So at 2:12:09, the chief opens up conversation. Captain Regan, Lieutenant Henkelman, Chief Choffey, Paul Duffy, Janice Romano, Fran Marinuzzi. He referenced me while talking about the scene from the movie Animal House. I'd actually never seen that scene in the movie. I had to Google it on YouTube and understand what was even being spoken about. He references the scene in Animal House where Kevin Bacon is on all fours in his underwear. And Kevin Bacon is getting spanked with a paddle over and over. And the chief says, "Hey, you know what? You know what that was? That was like, 'Thank you, sir, may I have another? Thank you, sir, may I have another?'" With Carol, "Yeah, slap me, slap me, thank you, sir, may I have another?" That's not funny if somebody's laughing, I'm just gonna say that right now, okay? How is this appropriate conversation in the workplace? Gloria, do you feel that to be appropriate conversation in the workplace?
I'm not making any comments now. I reserve my comments later.
Well, I'd be asking each and every one of you at the end of my presentation and what I have, to see what your comments are. I'm not cross-examining. Thank you. How is this appropriate conversation in the workplace? How is this conversation referencing me to that scene in Animal House with someone in their underwear getting spanked with a paddle appropriate? Do you think it is acceptable for the chief of police to be saying to a group of employees, which included Captain Regan, Lieutenant Henkelman, Paul Duffy, Janice Romano, and Fran Marinuzzi? Carol was in a really good mood. I think you were going in the back door and making her happy. Can you imagine this? The chief at Borough Hall with six other borough employees, two of which are police officers, talking about how anal sex is making me happy. Next.
You're funny. You people here.
Mike.
You people...
Shut up. That's not order.
Okay. Why I had go through?
You know what? Why isn't he being removed?
Mike.
For yelling out? You don't get to do that, sir.
It's under control. It's under control. Go ahead.
For the record, that's my husband, and he has had to hear me listen to tapes talking about tops having anal intercourse, anal intercourse with me. I wanna know which one of you sitting in this audience that has a wife, a sister, a daughter, is okay to listen to this continually? This is disgusting. I don't understand what kind of world we have come to, and this town is out of control.
Mr. Altieri, that's not funny, Mr. Altieri.
Next, they laughed at the chief's statements saying about me. Ooh, what a visual. Then Chief Choffey continues saying, "I remember that whole thing about a bag. That's a two-bagger. One for you and one for her." Then they all continued to laugh, going back and forth about me. I wanna ask all of you, if you think that this is okay, with this being said at work by employees about myself, another person who was working at Borough Hall? Would you find this conversation okay if Chief Choffey, Captain Regan, Lieutenant Henkelman had these types of conversations about any residents, about your wife, your daughter, or your sister? How can you find that this disgusting, deplorable, rude, indecent, vile conversation does not warrant hiring a hearing officer? This language and conduct is not the conduct of an officer and a gentleman, or any borough employee. As if that wasn't enough, within minutes, Chief Choffey returns to the conversation about me saying, at 2:16:24, "She was very happy." Lieutenant Henkelman responds, "So were you." Chief Choffey then goes on to reference how, "Mike, my husband was making me happy," again referencing sex. You can hear Captain Regan and Lieutenant Henkelman going to belly laughs. It is out of line for the chief of police, the most senior law enforcement officer of this borough, to walk, to talk this way in front of women. It is out of line for him to speak this way about women. It is out of line for him to speak this way in front of employees, and it is out of line for him to speak this way in front of subordinates. On the flip side, it is out of line for all of these individuals that were present to engage in this conversation, to laugh about it, and to not say, "Stop." By not saying "stop," they were all participants. Disgusting, vile, reprehensible. And for you to not bring a hearing officer to investigate this situation makes you complicit in these actions, and you are all accepting and tolerant of this type of graphic, explicit sexual harassment if you vote no to a hearing officer. I brought the sexual harassment policy with me. The borough has a zero tolerance acceptance of sexual harassment in the workplace, for the record. I believe Ellen Park was asking if there ever was questions as to what policies we Talking this way about anyone. Oh, excuse me, I forgot this part. As if the above conversation, excuse me.
They're laughing.
They're laughing. They think it's funny. They think sexual harassment, sexual... I'm completely what, Ellen? What?
Did I ask you for something? I'm sorry. You said you mentioned me by name.
Yes, you're laughing through this whole proceeding. You're all on videotape. You are laughing. You have laughed every single time. Guess what? When you vote, if it's a yes or a no, I'm not gonna argue at all.
You don't reference me by name?
I will reference you every single time you have voted no twice to a hearing officer. You should be ashamed of yourself. I'm gonna read the next comment here. Thank you. And I hope the young lady in the back that spoke so eloquently, Angela, is still here, because I want her to hear this. As if the above conversations weren't enough, then they felt the need to go make fun of Councilman Wu, saying, "Woo-woo-look." Then they go on to say, "Chink-chank-liang." Ching-chang-liang. And they all started laughing, "Walla-walla-bing-bang." Funny, huh? You think that's funny?
Shame on you.
Thank you. Thank you. You're trying to get me to stop talking about this. I am not going to. The residents have a right in this town to know. You have 30% Asian residents in this town, and you think it's okay to say ching-chang-liang? You people disgust me. Disgust me. I don't know how you put your head down on your pillow at night and sleep. You are elected to do a job, and to work for the residents that are in this town, whether they voted for you or not.
Mr. D. Gogorio, that's not funny.
I'm not laughing. I am not laughing. For the record.
In a few minutes, then they go, there's more. In a few minutes, they then go on to talk about my looks. Chief Choffey says, "I don't wanna say anything bad, but you know, I don't know how..." Again, with a sexual reference and being egged on by one of the officers, I wasn't sure if it was Captain Regan or Lieutenant Henkelman, so I don't wanna name anybody incorrectly, goes on to say, he turns, then turns to Paul Duffy, saying, "If I had a choice between you and her, I'd take you. You're prettier." And then they all go on to have another belly laugh. Talking this way about anyone. Talking this way about anyone, a resident, an employee, or anyone else, is in violation of many things. There's absolutely no excuse for the language and conversation on this tape. None. Nothing. This is degrading and disgusting. This is humiliating. I'd like to hear what all of you have to say about these horrendous conversations made by the chief of police and the two other high-ranking officers. I hope you will take the moment to respond. And I hope you're not going to blame me that I deserved this, as I heard Mr. D. Gogorio say that it was the mayor's fault. Okay, I've heard all the tapes. I'm allowed to speak. He's not allowed to speak.
He cannot speak.
I hope that you are not going to blame me, as I am the victim, as you have been, going around door to door, saying things and handing out flyers. I have placed on the record, at the last two to three meetings, what I feel about who has conflicts, and I understand that Ellen Park does not want to respect that. I do feel that they will not be able to keep an impartial mind and vote on anything having to do with me. On 9/26/18, you heard tape number 100, where Chief Choffey called me a bitch, made a threat to wanna kill me, and then go back and forth discussing if it was worth it until a fellow employee I was breaking his balls. On the agenda was a resolution to hire a hearing officer. Eder Vursa, Gloria O, and Ellen Park, you voted no. On October 4th, 2018, you heard racist comments, derogatory comments, and cursing in a conversation between Chief Choffey and Captain Murphy about Councilman...
Dogs always know.
That was funny.
On October 4th, 2018, you heard racist comments, you had racist comments, derogatory comments, and cursing in a conversation between Chief Choffey and Captain Murphy about Councilman Mark Park. On the agenda was a resolution to hire a hearing officer. Eder Vursa, Gloria O, and Ellen Park, again, you voted no. Tonight, October 10th, 2018, you just heard me talk about conversations that were on tape number 102. You heard me talk about the additional racist comments about Councilman Wu and former Councilman Liang. You heard me talk about the chief referencing me to his... You heard me talk about the chief referencing me to a scene from Animal House where Kevin Bacon was in his underwear on all fours getting spanked. Thank you, sir, may I have another? Spank me. You also heard me just talk about a conversation where Chief Choffee is talking about how anal sex would make me happy, how this is a two-bagger, referencing maybe my husband was making me happy with a sexual undertone, and how he would prefer Paul Duffy over me because Paul was prettier. Guys, these tapes contain conversations that are so vile and disgusting that I just cannot understand how these police officers, Chief Choffee, Captain Regan, and Lieutenant Hinkleman, and the Borough employees mentioned earlier, could have engaged in them while on duty in uniform within our Borough Hall. Our workplace should be a safe place, free from these types of conversations. It is no surprise to me that we do not have a female officer here, given how the chief is conducting himself. Perhaps it is a blessing because I can only imagine what that female officer would have been subjected to under such a vile and disgusting man, from what I have heard on these tapes. I would just, before I step away, like to read what PBA Local 49, Police Benevolent Association, Local Number 49, said about Sheriff Sardino when they found out about the racist comments, which, in my opinion, what Sheriff Sardino stated on those tapes was children's hour for Mr. Rogers' neighborhood compared to what I have heard and what I stated to you. The PBA members put a letter out, I'm just going to read you the first paragraph, I'm not going to read the whole thing. "The members of this union are deeply disturbed by the comments made by Sheriff Sardino. His conduct undermines all law enforcement officers and destroys the relationships we worked so hard to establish in our community. His statements are a stain on law enforcement which cannot be tolerated." They all just say how they reject his comments. I look forward to our PBA saying the same thing because our police department is an accredited police department and to be an accredited police department, there are certain criteria. And their mission statement, well, they have a mission statement as well as does the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. And the New Jersey State Association of Chief of Police, right off their website, says, "To promote and enhance the highest ethical and professional standards in law enforcement at all levels through New Jersey." I wouldn't call this the highest ethical work performance. I hope tonight that you show the decency to do the right thing and uphold the policies within our Policy and Procedures Manual along with our rules and regulations under the police department, which many were violated on this. And they were under a municipal ordinance, 2013.11. They violated D, using indecent, profane, harsh, or uncivil language to any person while on duty. They violated J, immorality, indecency, rudeness. They violated N, for conduct on becoming an officer and a gentleman. And under their police department rules and regulations, these were public documents, guys. They violated 3:1.14, 3:7.3, 3:7.14, 3:11.5, and 3:11.7, and maybe many others. That was what I came up with.
Thank you, I got them all.
Oh. So I would just like to ask, Councilwoman Versa, after you heard what I read, what do you have to say? Do you think it's appropriate for any police officer to use, it's a yes or a no, to use sexual explicit commentary in the workplace, yes or no? You can't answer yes or no? So are you refusing to answer yes or no? Councilwoman Park, do you think it's acceptable for police officers to use sexually explicit commentary as they did describing anal sex amongst many other things that I read to you? Do you find that acceptable for the police officers that remain in this situation? Yes or no?
I'm going to reserve my rights here, my comments, I'm going to reserve my comments.
What's there to reserve?
Because I'm not here to have a banter.
I'm not having a banter, I'm asking, I'm not an elected official anymore. Excuse me, I'm not an elected official anymore, I am a resident. Okay, you serve all the residents of this town and I'm asking you if you believe that sexually explicit commentary in the workplace is allowed and should police officers...
Very inappropriate language, yes.
Councilwoman O, do you believe that sexually explicit commentary? Don't interrupt me.
You're asking me a question...
Let me finish my sentence.
And when I'm going to answer you, you're cutting me off.
No, you did the same thing last time, Mrs. Hallari.
I'm going to also reserve my comments until later and I just want to make one more comment. When someone from this side of the room comes up here and wants to have a dialogue, mayor doesn't allow that, so I don't know why.
Do you think it's appropriate, do you think, I'm not getting, do you think it's appropriate, given the subject matter? Do you think it's appropriate, I'm on topic about sexual harassment and you're comparing and playing politics against me. Does Councilwoman Park have anything to say? Do you think it's appropriate for sexual commentary in the workplace or racist comments, Councilwoman Park?
This is absolute, okay, this is absolute, cannot accept.
I can't hear.
Please, Mrs. Hallari, I agree with this. Really, I am so disappointed that our fellow council members have to investigate about this one. We cannot tolerate about this racial and sexual comment. How can we? We just a couple of times we put in these letters, they are too continue to deny about they don't know about it, they didn't listen about this point, but tonight, you already mentioned about the theory what's going on in our town and this is a real, I am so upset that I'm listening to your comment, we cannot accept the body. Please, our fellow members, our council members, do your job for our residents, not for police chief and the police officer, that's clear. Thank you.
Councilman Wu, do you think it's acceptable for racist comments or sexually explicit commentary in the workplace or sexual acts?
I think it's 100% inappropriate. It's very difficult as a Chinese-American to hear the word "chink." If anyone questions what a racist slur is, being called a "chink" as a Chinese-American, that's the definition of a racist comment. It's our responsibility to have a safe workplace. Immediate action should be taken based on our zero tolerance policy. We have to address them, have to address all of these things. Carol, again, thank you for your courage and bravery in coming forward. It's not easy, I've mentioned it before, I have a family with two young children. Anyone receiving a threat in the workplace? I just can't fathom that there's people that don't see this as an issue or for that matter, comments need to be reserved. It's a yes or no question. Zero tolerance doesn't accrue jokes of any kind. Thank you.
Thank you, just a, stop, please, 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 let me just say this, as a matter of procedure, when I heard about these tapes early on in this year, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, when I heard about these tapes earlier this year, and then I had the opportunity to listen to them because I'm a defendant in the lawsuit, I was surprised, you know, that somebody could be that callous, that ignorant as to what America stands for, that he would record these things. And so what happens when people do things like this? The first thing they do is they hire their lawyer, the guy standing back there, and they try to put the toothpaste back in the tube so all of you will never know what actually goes on. And this is how Mayor Parisi and his father governed this town for 42 years. You never knew, you never knew where the checks were going, you had no idea, trust me, you had no clue what was happening, nothing, right? People were getting railroaded, Mike McMorrow was getting railroaded, other officers, you know, we had people suing the town. You never knew, I never knew, I have not found out. So this is what they try to do, Ms. Carol Thierry, the other guys, they try to put the toothpaste back in the tube. You can never put toothpaste back in the tube, especially around me, because that toothpaste is going everywhere, okay? And you're reading it. And so, so here we go, here we go, here we go. So then, so then what we have is, I finally get the ability to free up these tapes, I, stop, I, excuse me, excuse me, I finally get the ability, I get the ability to free up these tapes so you all can listen to them, right? Which drives everybody even crazier, oh my God, do you mean the residents are actually going to hear what goes on back there in the police department? And by the way, I didn't even get to go back there, but the chief's own lawyer was able to go in through the private entrance in the back, it's like their town, right? They get to do whatever they want. I don't get to go back there, but Mr. Altieri, he's got the toe to the door, I mean, he's going in the back door of the building, right? So then, here we are, he walks into the office there, we're sitting there in a caucus, "How'd you get in here?" It's like you don't own your own town, people, you gave it up. When Parisi was in power, he gave it to Choffee, he gave it to Simons, he gave it to everybody. But now you have the opportunity, take it back. I asked the PBA when they were here, I invited them several times, "Stand with me against racism, stand with me against sexism, stand with me against workplace violence." Nothing, they couldn't answer that. So I always say you can't fix America without fixing these towns, you're living it, folks, we're fixing America because we're fixing this town and we're going to get through this, okay? Thank you.
I think, I just want to say, I want to thank, I just want to thank the council for allowing me a little extra time and Mayor and Ms. Rosito, I just, I see the lawyers writing feverishly as I speak, and I hope I'm not going to be continually harassed for telling the truth, and I wanted to publicly say that because this has been non-stop harassment.
Thank you, Mr. Altieri has made himself a witness.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Russell Burino, 220 Fabio Avenue, I'm not sure where to start. I'm going to start by thanking Carol McMorrow, first for her years of service to this borough. You folks sitting up there know what she does, what she's done over the past years that she's been involved in the borough of Angleful Cliffs. She's taken the borough on as her adopted child and turned it into a full-time job, putting a professional career aside to help manage this borough. It's been a, I've tried to help her, I've worked with her both professionally and as a friend over the past few years, and I think everyone needs to understand the time that she's put in. I got up at this mic years ago when Michael McMorrow was suspended years ago for asking for, I believe it was for asking for an attorney to be present during a deposition. All right, so we want to talk about inequality and things that were done wrong, and I got up in support of the deputy chief at that time, and I stand behind him today as well. Getting back to Carol for a minute, she's worked non-stop, as you all know, on your affordable housing litigation, and again, I have to measure my words carefully, but one should look back over the past 40 years quite carefully to measure who did what. And when the same folks get up at each meeting making the same idiotic comments that the affordable housing is the result of the planning board's action this past year is beyond idiotic. It's clearly a political ploy. I understand that people over the Democratic operatives are knocking on people's doors saying it's the planning board's fault and therefore Mayor Kranjak's fault. It's idiotic and it's wrong and it's dishonest. Stepping forward now to the question, I lived as a neighbor to Chief Choffee and his family, and I don't have any bad words about him or his family as a person. What has come to light to this council though, and to the members of this public more recently, is something that needs to be addressed. I spoke at the last, I guess, two minutes ago about that it was black and white and it's become so obvious to me that this board, this council, doesn't even have a choice anymore. In the military, I think they call it dereliction of duty by not stepping up and doing what's right. This ship is going down one way or the other, we've heard enough to know that that's the case. So when is this governing body going to step up and say, "You know what? This has to be looked into." We aren't asking you to judge the merits yet, but you cannot get all the facts, as was requested, I think, by one of the councilwomen at the last special meeting. You can't get 100% of the facts until you at least hire an independent person to look at and listen to these tapes and to then come back to you with suggestions on how to handle it. I'm not saying I know what the answer is and what the right disciplinary action is, but clearly there's enough there for a reasonable person to say, "We need to look at this." I just get, it befuddles me that there could be an attempt to kick this can down the road. That's gone, that's over, the ship's going down. Thank you.
Maria Hallari, 45, Jane Drive. I've been left speechless by what I heard, I mean, I read what I read in the newspapers, but all this other information that Mrs. McMorrow presented to this body really scares me to my core that we are allowing this to go on as if everything is a joke. I'm an Italian immigrant and I've been called a Guinea and I was made fun of in school because I didn't speak English. And I think that we've come so far and yet we haven't gone anywhere for Ms. O. and Ms. Park to sit here and reserve their decision on something that is so clear that in any court of law is proven with the persons' own words that these gentlemen are being disparaged by the chief of police, the employees of this town, and the rest of the police department. I'm not saying that they are all guilty of this because at some point, when your boss is speaking, sometimes some people who would like to speak up can't because they're afraid for their jobs. And so what I'm saying is, is that there's a group that's really rotten here and it needs to be dealt with because as a resident of this town, it scares me. You had a whole police department put their seal, the police seal, to represent one party. What does that mean for me? I declared myself a Republican, I never knew that that was like a death sentence in this town, and it is, it really is, you are judged like no other simply because you're a conservative. What a disgrace. What has this country become? The more laws we put into effect, the more little things, oh, we can't do this, and then we find out this? This is worse than ever, worse than when I was a child in this country. I don't think I heard the disgusting things that I heard tonight when there weren't any laws in place to protect people from language like that. Mr. Park here, by the way, Ms. O, you said the Korean news is in the back. I hope that they're still here. Oh, I hope so, and I hope that they report. But you sat quietly while this man, this wonderful human being, Mr. Park, is being spoken about in such a horrible way, in such wasteful tones and jokes. Mr. Wu, the most decent people I've ever met, these two gentlemen right here. Mr. Liang, how can you do that? That's like hearing Guinea all over again, when I hear ching chang and a clown. How could you, how could you sit there quietly and not ask for an independent somebody to look into this? Shame on you, Ms. O, shame on you, Ms. Ellen Park, for your community, for your own people, because you don't represent me. And you don't stand up for your own...
You can laugh.
All you want. I wanna tell a gentleman here from Italy, wonderful. I was an immigrant as well, and my parents were hard workers as well. That doesn't give me any right to anything, other than what we personally accomplished in this country. How, Mr. DeBeborio, I sat here, I can't, I don't remember how many meetings ago, where you sat there with your child, and you kept pointing at Mayor Cranjack, and in your loud voice, were saying, you see that man up there, Stan? That's a bad man. That's a, shame on you, you're a bad dad for doing that. Thank you.
I have a few things to say, and, um, I just wanted to say to Cal McMorrow that I'm sorry she had to go through that, and Deputy McMorrow is, is a hero in many ways before I turn around and say that. I didn't recognize him tonight, but, and he's my hero, and I don't think anybody in this town has a bad word to say about him. I wanna discuss what I assert and believe tonight, and I need both sides to be with me on this, and I think you will be. It's regarding your insurance company for the borough. And I'm asserting that I believe the following, and I believe there are several lawyers here on the council, the mayor's a lawyer, so, um, my belief is that your insurance company lawyers, one or the other, committed absolute and abject fraud. Okay? I've sent all of you a text tonight and a picture, and in case you don't have it, my film, if you Google my name, it is, not Google my name, you can just put my name to YouTube and you can reference things on my film. But, um, what they've done, when they commit fraud, they're not working for you or the borough. If I have, if my, have a tree that falls on my neighbor's property, and my insurance company takes pictures of the tree, and that, and they doctor the pictures, and the tree only shows up on my property, they're not representing me, they're committing fraud. And regarding your insurance company, you don't, or worse, you don't owe them anything, because I can easily prove they committed fraud, and they're not working for you. They raise your rates every time there's a lawsuit, okay? And I don't want you to take their side. I think you should take my side for many reasons. But I believe none of you have an ethical responsibility to take their side if they're committing fraud in the name of the town. The issues with the police department, they're not the deciders. You are. And I'm not talking about the other issues. If they commit fraud, they are creating a moral hazard. Whether or not you agree with the way, I'm talking to the Democrats or some, the way the mayor's doing things or not, I think generically, we would all agree that if there's corruption in a town, generically, if the insurance company commits fraud to get cases thrown out, they are not serving the community, they're serving themselves. You, when you have an insurance company, you get the insurance company so that they can in turn pay settlements, and this is outrageous what was done. Now, I've submitted some evidence to you. I'd like to sit down with the mayor and council privately, publicly, it doesn't matter to me, take me a half an hour. From the very beginning, seven years ago, I have all the evidence. There's no question about it. This evidence has been doctored in this and that, in every which way, through the criminal trial. All right? Forget about that now. Now your insurance company does the same thing that the police involved did. What the hell, and, this is nothing personal, if it's on any of you, it's not, it's not personal. What the hell is going on? They do the same things the police do, they doctor up the evidence, they digitally take a photograph and, and take the main feature of the photograph out, and that's just the start of it. What kind of people are these? What kind of animals are these? I want something done. I want all of you to be on my side, because you don't owe them anything. They are, they are, they are acting in your name, they are acting in the borough's name, and I believe they are abject criminals. And I believe that somebody's gonna get, gonna get this barred, who works for, works for them. I don't think they can, they can get away with this. So I'm asking all of you to help me, and I'm employing the lawyers on the council. And, and Marie, this is not normal, okay? So please, consider that, and I wanna get together with you, and I want, once and for all, let's stop this madness. What is it gonna take? Let me go back. So I get arrested falsely, I have all the evidence, I have the senior cop making it up on tape, okay? I have the pictures that didn't show up for a year, when they finally did, didn't show up, breaking the deposit, first showed up, they were darkened, the trial was delivered for jury selection. We finally got the pictures, the tapes were doctored, but seven, six years later, after ten hours of deposition with your insurance company lawyers, what do they do? They submit to the judge two photographs, which is all they were, and they doctor them both. And no one in their right mind is gonna think otherwise. I promise you, Mr. Versa, Ms. O, you know me, Ms. Park, you don't, I promise you, you will not think what they did was anything other than what I'm telling you. You have my word on that. I know the two of you, you're not crazy people. You will not think that. I want you on my side, okay? And Mayor Cranjack, please work with anybody who you can to settle this nonsense already. It's seven years. I just wanna remind you a few other things. Chief Chioffi and his fraudulent two-six-two investigation on me, does anybody know what that is? It's using the suicide hotline, pretending that I'm suicidal. I spoke at a meeting, Police Chioffi calls it suicide hotline, and he does a, I don't know, a week-long investigation on me, goes to my house, banging on my windows, I wasn't there, because he thought I sounded depressed at a meeting. Do you know why he did that? Because I, at that meeting, I said I will be submitting my lawsuits soon. So for years, there was a secret investigation on me. What are we, in the Soviet Union here? This is insanity in the Deputy McMorrow lawsuit, and it's chilling. And I don't know these exact words with me. She tells Deputy McMorrow, you should have thrown me up against the car? What the hell is going on? I don't live in this town anymore, I don't have a home here. My parents came here, my mother was an immigrant, by the way, in nineteen sixty, fifty-eight years ago, and I'm sorry, I'm not, if I sound angry, it's not personal. She came here, she left these two lips, she got the hell out of there, thank God, and went to North Cliff School. Look what they did to me. Please stop the madness. I'm done here.
So just, just so I can ask, I appreciate you coming in, I know it's painful, and, and I, you know, you'll have to recount it all, we will look into it. You were tried and found, you were acquitted, correct?
Yes.
On all counts?
Oh, yes.
I think that's important, since you're at the microphone, I think it's important that people know that. You were acquitted, and then you sued the town?
Yes.
Uh, civilly?
Yes.
And the town prevailed. And you're alleging that there was fraud conducted from the top of the police department through the insurance company. Is that what you're saying?
Let me clarify that. Everything involving the arrest, everything, was fraudulent. That's not what I'm really...
Right. You're right. Right, I got that.
Right. What I'm focusing on is that the insurance company, I don't know what they do with the police or not at this point, but the insurance company committed the fraud, and they followed the lead of the police department, which had done their own thing. So for tonight, what I'm really discussing about is that your insurance company has committed abject fraud, there will be no doubt about it. So...
And you're saying that because you're saying that photographs were doctored? Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's what I know of so far, and they were clearly doctored.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm, I'm not just saying that, uh, there's other evidence that corresponds to that, but yes, I'm saying that.
Right. So right now, we're litigating against you, so I'm not gonna ask anything else, I just wanna understand why you are here tonight.
You're litigating against me, but your insurance company is committing fraud, and they're doing so in your name and the borough's name. And by the way, my, you know, with what's been going on in the news, and what's been going on with, with Cal McMorrow, I just wanna say, women and children go through enough. We don't need crimes engineered, and that's, that's one thing. But when you have, when you have your insurance company engineering a situation, they are, they're creating panic among the women and children in the boroughs, and that's disgusting. Because we need to, if they think a crime was really committed because of what's on the, on the internet, and I have the proof to show that it isn't there, well, then I have to say that who's suffering other than me? All of you, the town's reputation, and the citizens who are needlessly afraid. And I hope that we can all meet and do something soon. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing and hearing now, oh, yes.
I'm Mary O'Shea, twelve Irving Avenue. Um, I sat here listening tonight. People think they lived here a long time because they lived here fifty-eight years. I'm seventy-three, and I've lived here for seventy-three years. And before that, my grandparents moved here in nineteen twenty-four, and my grandfather used to take the ferry to Woven Bay, headway to Woven, New York, at Janson's and Charles French Restaurant. My mother, her sister, and her brothers went through the Angleworth Cliffs school system, Bayview Avenue School was the only school, um, and then on to Fort Lee High School. I also went through the Bayview Avenue School and Fort Lee High School. I love Angleworth Cliffs, and I've always participated in every way I could, for the town, and with no motive of my own, no financial gain of my own, not to enhance my business, my career, or anything. I volunteered for the PTA, I was the hot dog lady in the school, I was the laundry person that put all the little trees in plastic bags with dirt. I was a softball coach, I ran the Little League standard, Johnson Irving Field, for the benefit of the, the sports committee, um, what else? I was a crossing guard for seven years on Floyd Street and then on Hammond Irving and Irving. I was on the Board of Health, I was on that Board of Adjustment, I am on the Planning Board. Um, I volunteered for the flu clinic. I do anything that I can to help the town, okay? And what I've got here tonight is absolutely disgraceful, and I really, really am pained by it. And I think part of the reason that the chief acts, or has acted with such impunity with his comments, is the fact that in his contract that he received from the Democrats was an immunity clause, that if he got sued by anybody, the town would have to pay the fee. So when you give somebody a get out of jail free card, they're gonna keep doing whatever they damn well please, because they're not gonna be financially held responsible. So I think that was an error, a grave error by the Parisi administration. I don't know if it was Joe Parisi Junior or Joe Parisi Senior, I think it was Junior.
Did you say error?
I said error.
Oh.
Error. E-R-R, or, I think. Uh, I'm not a good speller. I use spell check on my best stuff. So, uh, that contributed to the situation we have. And they've had many lawsuits against the chief. Robert Agresta was one, um, there was others, and I'm sure the lawyers who could rattle them off from memory, I can't, but numerous lawsuits against the chief that were settled or dropped for one reason or another, okay? You can't have somebody do what he has done. You can't have somebody say what he has said. And months and months ago, before I was aware of any of those actions, I had made a comment here, and a lot of the Democrats went, "Ooh!", because I said it. But I felt that the head of the department sets the tone for all the people that work for him. And the chief's attitude, which showed through in some of these tapes, also reflects on the rest of the department in the, at Ray Ray Toot residence. And I remember the incident with Councilperson Park, when he had a complaint from Committee Agresta on Hollywood Avenue about the street being closed, and how rudely the police officer treated him when he brought it to the council, who was attacked for bringing it forward. And Gloria O went around to the family of the young man and tried to change the story and change the dialogue, but that action that leads to, I don't know which police officer it was, and I don't know the name of the respondent, but it was when Hollywood Avenue was being paved. And that is a direct result of the attitude of the police chief. And I also said that I felt that threatening to kill somebody is not a joke. You know, they say many things are said unjust, but most of the time, they're true. They seem like when somebody's drunk, and they make accusations. That's what's really on their mind. And for him to say that he wanted to kill Councilwoman McMorrow, that is something that he's been having on his mind. And for him to be in charge of this borough's safety, and carrying a gun, and having a huge gun, and then returning to the seniors, he showed us this big, big gun he got from surplus, supplies from the, from the government. I mean, I could just see this, who brought the whole place away? And it's terrible, it's just terrible. And we really, really do have a hearing on this. Nobody is asking the council to make a decision on his actions. What's being asked of you is to appoint a hearing officer, so someone else can evaluate what has happened. Now, Councilwoman McMorrow, I know as a friend, and I know professionally, and she has worked tirelessly for this town, with recreation, going to all the games, going to basketball, going to soccer, going to baseball. I had a method out when my teacher went to baseball, I couldn't be bothered going and sitting up at the field watching somebody else's kids play, to be honest with you. All right, she went and watched the games, she goes to the sign-up, she goes, does the big thing with the holidays, with the ice skating rink, and the warden, and the slayer, and all that, the five-point run, okay? And when she was in her first term, she tried to have the street fair, and she got opposition from the mayor, Mayor Parisi, and the council, every step of the way, because she was trying to do something. They didn't want her to accomplish anything that she could be proud of, because they wanted to knock her down. When she tried to get the information sign with a grant that's owed by the ambulance corps driveway, that was criticized. She paid for the installation with her own money, okay? She tries to do the right thing, and has always tried to do the right thing. And Councilwoman Agresta, and Park, and Gloria O, all of you combined, having done ten percent of work as a councilperson, as she has, okay? And it's, it's terrible, it's terrible. You do not do what you're elected to do, okay? All you're doing, Ellen, is selling the town for emails that are three years old or two years old, causing expenses, okay? You don't do anything, you really haven't done anything. Gloria was in charge of budget when the Democrats were in charge, but then Julia Kindred did the hard thing for her, and she just let it off. She couldn't take it now to do it, because she doesn't know how to do it, okay? So, you know, people that do nothing resent somebody who did do something and did a lot. So, you know, people that do nothing resent somebody who did do something and did a lot. And for Councilwoman McMaro to have to resign her seat because of these actions by the chief of police and because of the inaction from the three Democratic councilpeople, it's a crime, it's a shame, it's a shame. And it really, really needs to be corrected. And I have a daughter and I have granddaughters, and the thought of those comments in the workplace and for the women present to laugh at it, they should have said, like she said, "Stop." Okay, I've been in the presence of somebody that was making bad remarks and you say, "Stop," and you repaired it. Every one of those people in that room should have come to the administrator, whether it was Jamie or Spina or whoever, they should have come and repelled at those actions. And they stood by and did nothing, and they are complicit in that whole thing also. Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Francis Queso, I reside at 17 West Bayview Avenue. So basically what I would like to, oh, sorry, thanks, Mary. So basically what I would like to say is that I wasn't raised in this town, I've been here since 2003. Senior Mayor Perus actually married myself and my ex-husband, Doctor Fernando Leguero, which I then divorced in 2011. I grew up in Fort Lee, but I know you, Mary, I used to hang out with your daughter, Virginia and stuff, and Timmy and Sean, yeah, and your husband, so you're very well-known. And yes, you've done amazing-like things, you always worked, I remember your dog lady too. So, this ain't the norm. It's sad because between here, Fort Lee, and other police departments and stuff, I went to school with all these people. Like, I went to the Fort Lee schools and then I went to like private schools, I went to like PC, and these towns, like, we all grew up together between like the kids and like the parents and everything, and it's just like messed up with what's going on over here, like, within the police department. I don't think the cops have anything to do with this like political like mumbo jumbo. I think one person started it, you know? And it's like now, you know, it's like they're miserable, you know? Like, this town has one freaking cop, okay, doing South and North Cliffs, okay? Like, last Friday, I picked my daughter up from North Cliff School, she's six years old, my daughter Trinity, my only one, right? And here's like this blonde cop or whatever like standing there, and I'm like, "Oh, it's nice to see a cop in uniform over here for once instead of the crossing guard." I go to him, "Oh, I'm the only one working the whole entire town here, South and North." I'm like, "Well, how the hell can that be?" You know, it's just like messed up, like, I don't know, like, I think, I think you all can figure it out, though. I think this thing is like hyped up, like, what was done to like Carol, that's like totally like inappropriate. Like, if that was like my mother, okay, like, I don't know, like, honestly, I can't even like really even be like honest like right now, okay? Me as a woman and as a mother, like, the shit that she had to go through and, you know, her husband there, like, I mean, it's messed up. Like, that's like some like real messed up stuff that woman had to go through, okay? So, I don't know, I think we should all just like get along or like figure out how to get along. I mean, is it really like that hard? Like, what are we in like grade school over here that we have to quote somebody still like a pizza face and like make these little Snickers and slurs and shit like that? Like, what the hell does that shit like make us like look like? I mean, we're better than that. It's just like not. I mean, I don't know, look, I get along with like everybody, like, I don't care Republican, Democrat, you believe in this, you believe, look, whatever works for you. Like, live your life, you know? At the end of the day, let's just like make it happen, but be pleasant about it. Nonsense has just got to stop. But you're doing a great job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You know?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Okay, have a motion to close this.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. So I just want to also say that, you know, at the municipal level, it really shouldn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat. We don't tax your income, other people do that. We don't decide your social issues, other people do that. So we want, we want a council up here that works, that does its job. I've asked even Mayor Perus earlier to join me in condemning workplace violence, sexism, and racism. I'm still open if you want to join me in that. You're not going to do that. Okay. So, look, we're trying to make America a better place. As I always said, I'll work with anyone who'll work with me. I know who'll work with me, I'll work with them, okay? All right, so let's do the claims, the Resolution 18-205, payment of claims, September 13, 2018 through October 10, 2018. Two million, one hundred five thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents, can I have a motion? Second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
P. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
Resolution.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, we recognize.
Excuse me, Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Don Yee.
This is exactly why you didn't recognize. No, no. There was a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Don Yee to fill the vacancy on Borough Council.
I think you carry that motion to the special meeting on October 16th.
It was seconded.
I second that.
Yep.
Let me explain why, let me explain why. It doesn't trump him.
Yes, it does.
All right, there was a motion, there was a motion, it was seconded, I asked for a roll call. You addressed the world, he addressed me, okay? It's different.
I tried to address you, I tried to address you, Mayor, and you.
No, no, you addressed, you addressed.
This is what happens at the meeting of all down.
I ordered to appoint a caller.
No, no, you're wrong. We're taking a roll call, I'm just undercarrying.
I'm ordering you to do that right now.
No. You can't, you can't order that. You cannot, you can't, you can't follow the Roberts rule. It's not according to Marion's rule. It's according to the Roberts rule.
I ordered a roll call before you chimed in.
May I have a discussion?
No, I ordered a roll call.
And I'm asking for discussion.
There's no discussion.
As usual, he moved, he seconded, I asked for a roll call.
What's the motion before?
And you guys were doing, I was asking for discussion.
For discussion and the motion.
On which, on his motion?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. Okay, so he made a motion. And it was seconded. And I want to make a motion, not to dismiss his motion, but to carry his motion to the special meeting on October 16th. No, no, you missed a step, you missed a step. No, you missed a step. There was a motion, a second, and I asked for a roll call. You're at the voting stage right now. Now, you have to vote. To carry his motion. I'm not asking you to amend his motion, I'm not asking to change his motion. I am asking to move his, carry his motion to the special meeting on October 16th. As within my rights as a county. As within my rights.
Let me explain, let me, let me explain to the crowd, to the public here what's happening. So we have a vacancy on the, on the council. We have a vacancy on the council as a result of Councilwoman, former Councilwoman McMaro's resignation. The way it works, she resigned on October 1st. The Republican County Committee has 15 days to put forward three candidates, nominate three candidates to fill that vacancy.
30 days.
And that's because, that's because the councilwoman who resigned was nominated by the political party, so the political party actually owns that seat, so to speak. The Democrats on council, the opposing party, have the right to select one of those three names that are proffered as nominees. And that's tonight.
No, it's not.
And they, no, no, let me finish, they have up to 30 days to do it. I put it on the agenda tonight. There has to be a vote tonight. There has, let me finish, let me finish, there has to be, so basically, I don't want to see anyone disenfranchising this town. Right now, we have a vacancy. We have the ability to fill that seat right now.
Let's do our protocols, Mayor, and rules of power.
And, no, you're playing games because you're on a vacancy. So what I want to do is.
Lock all you want.
Procedurally, Councilman Wu made a motion to fill that seat. Councilman Park.
You know what? It's going to be on you, Emery.
Councilman Park seconded it. I asked for a roll call, and I want a roll call. There's no motion to carry. There's no motion to carry.
You know what, we got reporters here.
Well, yeah, we do have reporters here, and I hope the reporters take a picture of you disenfranchising half this town, okay? Really?
You know what, there were too many times, there were too many times that you were incorrect.
You could vote, you could vote, yes or no.
We had to take it to court to get it reversed. Emery, Emery, no, you have to give your.
Take it back.
We're taking a vote undercarrying, not the agreement.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking to carry.
We, the motion to carry.
The roll call, the roll call came first.
We're asking.
You could vote, yes or no?
Read it, says it.
Why don't you tell me what rule you're talking about? Because I have a different rule that says that when the motion is made and seconded and a roll call is taken and it's recognized by the chair. Which your earlier motion, you did not have the floor, you also.
I understand. Ediversa just made a motion to carry.
No, Ediversa asked for debate and then he made another motion. That's what he did. He asked for debate and then he made, whatever, it's called debate under Roberts rules.
This discussion, I was recognized.
Yes, I understand.
You were also voting.
But you're not debating, you're making another motion to sidetrack the first motion. I don't get it.
No, no, no.
I understand, I understand.
Your discussion came when you have to be voted, yes, no, abstain, refuse. You need to do something.
Aunt Marie, can I proceed? Mayor, I want to, I want to, I want to protect myself and wait for Aunt Marie to advise me.
I want to put it on the record. I requested my email for 30 days and that was denied.
There's not been a statute.
Yes, there is, so.
Why is she taking them over there? Why do you wait? Hey, you weren't on that list, by the way.
All right, can you guys clear the door, please?
On the nominees. On advice.
Your seat's up here if anybody wants to sit down.
On advice of council, I will be taking the vote.
As directed by the mayor.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Don Yee for council.
I'm working as council member to fill vacancy on Borough Council.
Don Yee.
Don Yee.
You don't get to talk, Ms. Geiger. You can write all you want, but you don't get to talk from your seat, honey.
Read the rule where it says it doesn't supersede.
You missed your.
Yeah.
Who said that? Raise your hand if you said it.
You're lying. You're lying last time. Yes, yes, Don Yee.
You need to leave. I see Chief Chelphy out there, but of course she's not doing anything. Please remove them, remove her and the person she's next to and the woman in the back row. You're being removed, sir.
You know why? Because he's sexed the woman.
What's the Councilwoman Zaversa vote?
He hasn't.
What's your vote, yes or no?
Wait, we got, we got.
No, no, Councilwoman Zaversa.
I wanted to read the part where it says it doesn't supersede.
It doesn't supersede.
Can you read the part where it's.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're voting. The council already approved it.
To carry.
No, 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 don't. You have to leave, you have to leave because you don't get to yell like that and neither does Miss Fair in the back row.
No one gets to lie about me.
You get to leave now.
No, I don't.
Why do you have to scream? Why? Why can't you just sit there like everybody else?
You're mad at her, why? And yelling and pushing her, you don't stop.
Well, you can leave and talk about it outside because you can't, we're conducting business, sir.
I don't care, sir.
You need to leave. You have to respect this.
There's no need.
Councilwoman Zaversa, how do you vote, yes or no?
I'm waiting for the Borough Attorney.
She ordered, she ordered a vote already.
Whatever, is that your legal opinion, Emery? He says.
Councilwoman Zaversa.
We want to hear the part.
Under Roberts rules.
Councilwoman Zaversa, yes.
You're talking about.
Yes or no?
Section 37.
Yes or no, Councilwoman Zaversa?
Section 37, yeah.
The Borough Attorney instructed the Borough Clerk to instruct you to vote yes or no.
I can't hear her.
Well, that's because your colleagues are yelling.
No, it's over you, so if you wait a minute and let her speak.
Section 37 is a motion to re-continue.
They're making, they're trying to make up rules.
To carry.
Let's go on with the vote.
There's a call on the vote. Okay. Yes, I understand, your case vote is starting to come back.
Councilwoman Zaversa, yes or no? Councilwoman Zaversa said no.
Councilwoman Park?
No.
Councilwoman O.?
No.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Okay, so the, wait a minute, I'm speaking. So the thing here is, folks, you have to recognize that there's a vacancy. The three Democrats on council are leaving the vacant at the moment because they're disenfranchising half of your town, okay? This is what they're doing and this is what they stand for.
Last time we went to court, what you guys pulled.
That's for the good of the town, not and the state.
What, I'm recognizing you.
I'd like to make a motion to carry the appointment of the filled vacancy to the special meeting on October 16th.
I second that.
No, the statute doesn't provide for that.
I second that motion.
The statute does not provide for that.
Oh, really? According to, according to what rule?
We'd like to, I'd like to.
I control that agenda, not you.
It was actually set to us. We have a special meeting.
I can't hear you, I cannot hear the council members.
So you'd rather, you'd rather create all this confusion than actually just put someone on council? Is that what you'd rather do?
I'd like to wait days to vet the appointments.
You're, you're playing games, Mr. Zaversa. As always, you're gaming this.
The qualification is age and residency, right?
So can I announce my own thing?
No, I don't have to, I don't even have to. No, I just need to tell me the legal. That's not really a motion, I got a motion on the floor, can I second it?
Yeah, we, take a roll call. Take a roll call.
Well, let me just, for the record, the statute doesn't speak to rolling things out to a special meeting.
You know what?
And I control that agenda.
The Borough Attorney just gave you the right.
No, no, you know what, I control, I control the special meeting agenda. No, no, you know what? I control, I control the special meeting agenda.
With this, there is a special meeting, and it's...
The special meeting is not for this purpose. You had an opportunity to do the right thing here, and once again, you didn't do the right thing. I gave you a chance to vote, Mr. Yi, and, and you took it. I, I, your motion could continue, but it's, it's useless and irrelevant, because it's not valid.
Okay, we take a roll call.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion...
Yes.
To nominate...
There's already a motion on the floor with the second Councilman Wu. You can't do that. Take a roll call. Clerk, take a roll call.
One of the three, man.
Yeah. I would just like one thing to go simply in this town, and that is to fill a vacancy. You guys are, are, are very disgusted when you do this, okay? And just because you have to keep looking up in the back of the room to see what they're telling you to do, and Mayor Polis is here to make sure you do it, or else... All right, all right. You can finish the vote on, finish the vote.
Take a roll call. Okay, Eda, ready? Okay, Eda, all right, okay.
So, the, the vote is, is to... To carry the, the three little vacancies I voted for. We've already voted, there's already a vote on Yi Yi. Yeah, we're on the next one.
Motion, no, motion to carry... To the special...
Mayor, I think, yes. I think based on my initial motion, we should continue to vote and have the second candidate nominated. We have a condition, we have three, uh, vacancies, ten to eight, and we have to vote. I think that the council seat should be filled. Carol, you're three years on this council, and I think we should fill the seat immediately today. We, we have to, yeah.
If, if, if you're at home and you're watching this, we feel that I...
Why would we not want this council to fill?
They're taking your voice away. They're putting you back in the shack that you had for forty-three years with nonsense. They're taking your vote away, guys.
All three candidates are here today.
Wait. You want to know more about the candidates? They're all here today. They're all here, they're all here today. We're going to recess.
No, you don't get to do that. You don't get to do that.
You can go meet all the candidates. You can go meet them. He's here, Mary's here.
We just took three votes already on this side. No. Yes, yeah. Yeah, they gotta go. No, it's already in the middle of the vote.
Councilman Park?
What, who, what?
A motion to carry to, uh...
October, the special meeting on October sixteenth.
No.
Councilman Park? Oh, Councilman Wu, sorry.
I'm upstanding.
One of the, uh, one of the issues that Councilman Versa said, and, and, um, Councilwoman Ellen Park parroting, along with Councilwoman Gloria Earl parroting, he said that he didn't have an opportunity to look at and vet the candidates that we put forward, which I find common, but... He liked to, okay, so I'm going to call for a half hour recess.
You can't do that.
The, the, the three candidates, the three candidates are here. Excuse me, let the recess, let them come up.
You know what?
The three candidates could come up and meet, meet your firm, the council people.
Mayor, Mayor, point of order, point of order, ready to recess.
To nominate Mary O'Shea to fill the vacancy on Borough Council.
Mayor Polis, they can't see your hand signals from back there, so do you want to sit down? It might be, it might be easier for them to see you if you're here. They can't see your hand signals. Okay, so, um...
Yes, I made, I made a motion to appoint Mary O'Shea to fill, second to fill the vacancy on Borough.
Mark Park seconded it.
Yeah, I did, I seconded it.
It's an improper motion according to the attorney.
She's going to ask us to rescind it, is what she said.
Yeah.
That's what he has to do, and he's not doing it, and if he doesn't, he has to move forward on it too.
It's not a proper motion. For once, take it on our hands.
We, we did it, ladies.
The motion is not a proper motion.
Emery?
What?
Council, Councilwoman, Councilman Wu. The motion to carry till, uh, next Tuesday has been made, and the vote taken, and the, and the two open, the two open nominees are now carried till Tuesday. You can...
We're in the middle of the resolution. No, we are in the middle of a resolution.
Excuse me, members of the public, the public portion is closed. The council needs to rely upon itself, and upon me, and upon this book. There, there isn't time, uh, there isn't an opportunity for opening to the public for advice on procedure. I'm sorry. Councilman, Councilman Wu, I believe you can make a motion to reconsider the prior motion that was just approved. You can't jump to the main motion. The main motion is what was on the agenda, fill the vacancy. It was superseded by the carrying motion. If you want to get back to the main motion, you have to make a motion to reconsider what they did.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
And, you need a second?
Yes, a move.
Second, not moved, second.
A second, okay.
Okay, so now you can call a vote, and we know what the result is going to be, because the Democrats don't want to take this vote now. But that's the way the Roberts rules works. There can't be a jump to the main motion.
I, I believe the statute works differently, and we're violating that statute.
Well, I will just, what I am going to say to the councilmembers, O, Versa, and Park, I know you realize this, that the, the ordinance, the, uh, statute is both permissive and mandatory. It is permissive in that it can happen any time in the thirty days, but it must happen within the thirty days. Okay, so, you're, being as you didn't postpone indefinitely, which is a motion under Roberts rules, but rather, you specified four days from now. That's a, an appropriate motion for the two candidates that have not been voted upon yet. And if I'm wrong, then some judge is going to tell me, and it won't be the first time, and Roberts rules. I'm looking at what I can, I don't know this book by heart, I'm doing the best that I can. You weren't giving me any site from before, but I, I'll just tell you that I believe your first motion made early in the meeting was wholly improper for three or four reasons under Roberts rules. You have one page. Mine goes to Gloria, goes and refers to three or four different rules, okay? So, that, again, I'm just telling you from the beginning of the meeting that I believe you were an incorrect motion, three or four. I believe your motion is correct now, the Yi vote, you were voting no, sorry, that stands. Okay, okay, is, okay. Okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, hold on. I have the statute here, and I'm going to read the statute. All right, because I, I, I know that there has to be a nomination of all three of these things on. I have it, I have it. Majority voted the remaining members.
Would you like me to ask, um, Councilman Wu to reconsider his, or rescind his nomination? Okay, let's find that. Then you get to choose. No, we're not. You have three names. That's the three names. You chose to do it your way.
I just think that if this was the, uh, the upper school student council, they would have figured this out.
Okay, so, this statute says, and it's forty-eight, colon, sixteen, dash, eleven. The incumbent, when they are nominated, when they were in, in, uh, the seat from a political party, that political party, no later than fifteen days, gives the names of three nominees for the selection of the successor to fill the vacancy. It says nothing about requiring a vote on the three nominees all at once. I don't see anything in the statute about the following of voting procedures. In fact, it's silent. So, we have, what do we do? We have to look at what other governing documents we have for this body, like the bylaws, like the Roberts rules. There's an ordinance that talks about vacancies in the council as well. Those are, this statute is silent on the voting procedures, okay? It says, the next sentence is, the governing body shall, that's the mandatory part, within thirty days, that's the permissive part, of, of the appearance of the vacancy, appoint one of the nominees. They took a vote and turned down one nominee. I believe that's valid, and I believe that there are two nominees left to consider. Now, you know, I, I don't want to say Democrat or Republican, but that's the order in which these things happen. I don't see, unless, unless they rescind their motion to carry.
Where does the statute provide for motion to carry?
It doesn't, but it also doesn't provide for requiring an immediate vote. It does, it does, it's silent on the voting.
No, but the voting is permanent.
Yes.
There's nothing about carry.
Yes, but... He, they have a motion to carry. Mayor, listen, I can't twist and turn into proof. I can't. They did a motion to carry. It passed. That's because they have three votes. But you can't make that motion. There is something to stop it. First is, there is something.
I'll be taking the roll call for Councilwoman, Councilman Wu's motion to reconsider motion to carry. Councilperson Versa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
You can make the debate if you want to.
Point, point of order, yes, point of order. Uh, I just want to understand more about why we want to delay this process, other than a procedural, obviously, right now, the Borough Attorney's having difficulty finding, you know, what, what, in writing exactly which way vote, but I just want to hear, Ed, uh, if you could, let us know why you want to leave that seat unfilled.
I'd like to utilize my rights to choose the person that I think will fill the spot.
You had three days.
I have...
You had three days.
And I have...
You had a week, you had over a week.
Four more.
Mayor?
You had a week.
Mayor?
You had a week.
Mayor?
You're disenfranchising much of this town.
Can I see?
Four, that's it.
You're, you're disenfranchising many people.
Well, can I see? I have a comment. Okay, so, um...
Well, he, he hasn't voted yet.
No, we're up for discussion on this matter. So, uh, Councilman Wu, I'd like to answer your question. By law, we're allotted thirty days, okay, to fill in that, uh, vacancy. We don't have to take a vote today, and I know three names were given, I know who they are, but I don't really know who they are, so I'd like to have an opportunity to, you know what, you don't, you don't...
By law, by law, Emery, can you clarify, are we able to carry in the middle of a nomination of the three candidates?
I don't think you can.
But she already gave her legal opinion?
Yeah.
The statute does not permit it.
Let's just be clear what I did. What I said was, the statute is silent on whether the three nominees must be considered all at once, or whether they can be separated.
If it's silent, I already went forward, if it's silent, I already went forward with the first nomination, and it was in motion already. So, we should move to the second candidate.
Before your motion, next motion came, my friend, the motion was put to carry it to the sixteenth. That's correct.
Appreciate our friendship.
One, that's the law that we're entitled to. We're not asking for anything other than to express our own decision. Okay, one of the three candidates who guys said for it.
You're, you're, you're actually not entitled to that. The only thing you're entitled to is to vote tonight at this regular meeting.
Yeah.
That's all you're entitled to. That's all you're entitled to. And if you don't do it within thirty days, because you're not putting it on any other agendas in thirty days, then the other side has to decide, okay?
That's fine, that's fine.
Well, I, I just think it's a terrible pity and shame that you're doing this to the town that you're personally representing.
You know, we could disagree.
Actually, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't see any basis for your opinion, so I can't respect it.
Okay, just give me a few minutes, please.
Finish the vote.
Yes, finish this vote.
Uh, Council, Councilman Wu?
Yes. Okay, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to put this in recess until the Borough Attorney can recess this, because it's too important to, um, to keep this, it may take a while. Wait a minute. Okay, we're, we're clear on what we need to do. We're going to continue down the agenda. Okay, um, two oh seven, um, so this, I thought, in light of everything that we've heard, and I'm glad that, that the chief's attorneys are still standing there. Uh, this is Resolution eighteen dash two zero seven. Resolution affirming laws, policies, and codes against workplace violence, racism, hate speech, civil rights violations, violence against women, and discrimination. I'm going to read it, uh, because I think we all need to hear this. Whereas the Borough of Englewood Cliffs and its personnel policies and procedures manual, two thousand eight, supplemented in two thousand ten, and the Borough Code has previously established zero tolerance policies against workplace violence, racism, hate speech, civil rights violations, violence against women, and discrimination of any kind. These are collectively the prohibited acts, and whereas various laws and the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of New Jersey also legislate against the prohibited acts. And whereas Chief of Police Michael Chaffee has surreptitiously recorded himself and many others, and the audio recordings record Chief Chaffee himself advocating and/or participating in actions and words that demonstrate his engagement in the prohibited acts. Whereas the governing body of Englewood Cliffs desires to emphasize, reaffirm, and reestablish existing laws and its policies and codes regarding the prohibited acts. and reestablish existing laws and its policies and codes regarding the prohibited acts to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the borough citizens, employees, and visitors. And now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs that it acknowledges existing laws against the prohibited acts and emphasizes, reaffirms, and reestablishes its zero tolerance policies against workplace violence, racism, hate speech, civil rights violations, violence against women, and discrimination of any kind. Have a motion? Second. Federal call. What would you like to, what would you like to discuss?
Well, I was, um, hoping that you could add, um, because it's just violence against women. Shouldn't it kind of be violence against anyone? And I'm not sure...
It's workplace violence. Workplace violence includes everyone.
But it's just, you see, it's specific violence against women. No, no, it's workplace violence.
No, no, it, there's a litany of offenses.
Yeah, I know, that's, well, is it bad to add, and, you know, you know, anyone or against...
Well, I, I think what brings us all here tonight is violence against women. And I'd like to keep that separate for now, because that's what, we shouldn't dilute that.
Well, I've been assaulted, and I'm not, you know, I'm not a fan of, just, you know, I'm a fan of against anyone. I don't like...
Well, we have laws that, that do protect men as well, but, but the purpose of this resolution is to target, actually target and focus us on what brings us here tonight at such a late hour, uh, discussing this still. Uh, and by the way, Jamie, you're free to leave. You've had a long day. It's fine. All right. Thanks. All right.
And then the other, the other point, maybe is, is it okay to name a specific person? Can we just put, whereas, anyone has surreptitiously recorded?
Well, no one else has.
Well, at least we don't know that. We don't have any other tapes.
Well, if you know anyone else, then we'll, we'll do a separate one for them. But I think, I think tonight is all about the chief and, and what he's done. And like I said, you can't put that toothpaste back in the tube. Try it sometime. It's impossible. And you can't put the genie back in the bottle. He did what he did, and people have made light of it in some respects, but, you know, I'm hearing from people all over town, this is what they want to see. And I want to deliver this to them. And if you want to do the right thing, pass this. If you want to do the right, wrong thing, reject it. Federal call.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Um, I'll vote yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Point of order, Mayor?
So many, yes, what now?
I know. I'm busy, busy being today. Well, you got a lot going on. We had a lot of people speak, and I, I really, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to propose a resolution, and, um, I'd like to read it. So I'm gonna make a motion to, for this resolution to pass.
Is that a resolution that you prepared before the meeting?
Kind of.
Did you share it with anyone on the council and the mayor?
I'm, yeah, kind of mending your motion.
Your, your, your resolution.
So I'd like to make a motion for this resolution.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not following what you're saying. You, you prepared something that you didn't share with us before the meeting, as I share with you my resolutions. I don't have anything to read.
Uh, I guess you just listen. I know it's hard, but that's, you just listen.
So I'm, I'm just saying that as a matter of, as a matter of protocol, if you want to copy my resolutions, that's fine, but, but circulate them beforehand. But go ahead. I'll listen.
Okay. So, uh, whereas the mayor and council is the appropriate authority having reviewed the letter of Mayor Mario Frangiac date in September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen to the police chief Chaffee, and considered specifically, tariffs, tariffs four and five of said letter, and where they are, the opinion that the chief's actions cited on, on said tapes are not in the best interest of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Now therefore be resolved that the appropriate authority hereby suspends Chief Michael Chaffee for sixty days, beginning October eleventh, all of which will be without pay, will be taken from his accumulated vacation time. Be it further set forth that the interim captain Brian Murphy and Timothy Regan shall sit in his place. And it is further resolved that unless the chief of police waives his rights concerning these charges, he shall be entitled to a hearing pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, one four dash one four seven.
So, Ed, just in, in, in plain English, you're saying you want to suspend the chief for sixty days? Starting tomorrow?
Starting tomorrow.
Okay. Without pay?
Without pay. You use accumulated sixty days.
No, it's a, it's a cumulative.
Cumulated, uh...
So you, so this is not like something that you just did here. It's typed.
And I scribbled on it, and if you notice, all the blanks are filled in by me now. That's just the way it is. Yeah, I think Mr. Wu was correct. I think we should, uh, take action now. I'm okay with that. If you don't like it, you don't have to vote it.
No, I just want to be sure and make, there, I think that the council members should be given an opportunity to look and see if they might, might want to make amendments.
Okay, we can take a, we can take a recess.
Can I make a motion to open to public?
Yeah.
Hold on a sec. We're in the middle, we're in the middle of another motion.
I second the motion.
We'll do that.
All right, who's running the meeting?
I'm sorry. Excuse me, excuse me. I know that Englewood Cliffs, in their agendas, they open to the public, and they try to advise all of you when we know in advance that we're, uh, adding resolutions. But I have represented many towns, and a governing body is allowed to add resolutions onto its agenda. They are, uh, by law. So you're all here, you all heard it, just like we did. It's not a secret. There is no law that requires we give you a copy. Okay, we're going to discuss this.
No, I didn't actually say the motion. I said, just like before, when I asked you to amend.
They made a motion to second, to open to the public. I understand, but no, we're doing that.
All right, I'm sorry. I, I understood that Councilman Zaverta said he marked up mine.
No, no, never said that. It's a completely different resolution. I haven't seen it. It's been typed, so unless, he's got a printer there, we didn't see him print this, so type it. Doesn't really matter. And he didn't share it with them. And, and you know, he didn't...
What resolution? My resolution?
No, the resolution that's on the agenda. Everyone's complaining. We have a resolution to place the chief on leave in the package. It's there already.
It's two eleven.
Repending charges. It's there already. Just add in what you say. Sixty days, though I think I'm hearing, I think... And you're saying without pay. Understand that without pay... I should have discussed this in closed. Okay, I understand. I, I...
We, we can't, we, we can't do this without having a closed, without having a public meeting. It would have been proper to, let me, hold on, let me finish, without having shared this with people before. And if we're crying out loud, we've been here since six-thirty, and no one shared it till now. I don't know. I don't know if the lawyer would have written it this poorly.
He had it in there.
Wouldn't surprise me, but he, maybe he did.
I put it in the, in the chief's room before the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Ed, where was this printed? Yeah, we are. Ed, where was this printed? It was printed on his butt, he said, okay? That's what he said. That's what he said. Okay?
So it was well-prepared prior to tonight. It was printed on the night of it. Okay, hold on a second. Hold on. You want to have that? So... Okay. Are we on his resolution now? Oh, no, he's introducing. Okay.
Two, withdraw this, and then amend on the twenty-one. No, we don't need to spread that.
They can withdraw that motion. Okay. So, uh, after the consultation among councilmen, if, um, the last motion that was made was by, uh, the two councilwomen, no, no, to open to the public, please withdraw that motion. But there's no need to do that. I, I withdraw that motion.
And I second.
And then Councilman Zaverta?
All right.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, then Councilman Zaverta?
He needs to withdraw his...
Yeah, I'm gonna rescind my, um...
Just withdraw it.
Withdraw it. Withdraw my resolution.
Okay, so we are going to, we will wait until we get to two eleven. Resolution two eleven. We're gonna adopt that with some amendments to it. So, but right now we're on the Witty Field Contract, two oh eight, ladies and council members.
Uh, sorry.
I need my copy back.
You took, I wrote, uh, wait, I wrote on this? Wait, wait, wait.
Resolution two zero eight, authorizing action with respect to contract tennis and basketball courts. I need a motion?
Sum of second.
Uh, we, uh, we, we did a slight amendment to add that the borough attorney, the borough administrator, and/or the borough engineer are gonna work together on that one.
Okay, okay. Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes.
Moving to two oh nine, yes.
Two oh nine, reapportment of Alan C. Rock Esquire as hearing officer. I need a motion?
Sum of second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
No, I'm, just give me one second. Nothing. Yeah, can you, because it's seventy-five hundred dollars, so let me just...
Yeah, I checked with our CFO. He's got it signed yet, but we think it's fine.
No, he, he approved it.
Okay.
He put the seventy-five hundred? All the resolutions that, um, require funds have been approved by the CFO. Okay, yes.
O.?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woe?
Yes. Two ten?
Two ten, appointment of Brian Chronic Esquire as hearing officer. I need a motion?
Sum of second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
Yes.
O, that's, M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Right, now, uh.
Right, so 211, we've made some changes.
Right, so call for the reading of the title and then I'll make the change.
211, placing chief Michael Chioffi at administrative leave with pay. Oh, without pay.
Okay, so, the resolution title will now read, resolution imposing administrative leave without pay upon police chief Michael Chi- Chioffi and reserving recruitment of salary. Yeah, we do it for other, other things. Um, no change until after now, therefore, the first paragraph number one, council members, will read now, administrative leave without pay is hereby imposed upon chief of police Michael Chioffi effective immediately and extending for the entire time, I'm sorry, and in extending, extending for a period, continuous period of one hundred and twenty days. That's the change there, uh, and extending.
Which he could use, um, take from his cumulative.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's dealt with in another paragraph, hold on. Paragraph number one, members of the public, if you're reading along, it's the administrative leave will be without pay, it will be imposed immediately, and it will run for a continuous period of one hundred and twenty days. You can see in the next par, the rest of that, the rest of that is crossed out. The second paragraph, number two, allows the mayor and council to extend the administrative leave if need be. It's already in there, in other words. Number three provides for recruitment of salary if appropriate and use of the accumulated, uh, time. That has no change, so the, the change is administrative leave without pay for one hundred and twenty days. Everything else.
But the one hundred and twenty extends beyond.
He can use as vacation, cumulative vacation time is one hundred and twenty days.
But that, I don't have to put that, we can do that through our benefits department. We don't, we don't have to vote on that, that's a right that they already have.
Emily, there's nothing to recoup, right, he's without pay, the original was with pay.
Yes, but there are other matters that might have, might represent a recruitment, earlier matters.
Okay, and one hundred and twenty days goes beyond his retirement date, right?
Correct, that's the purpose of getting us beyond the retirement date. I am assuming, uh, well, I guess I shouldn't speculate. Chief Chioffi has not yet put in his, his, uh, retirement papers, so he can do it at any time. The charges don't disappear because he puts in a retirement.
Make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, pick the borough cop.
Okay, so, councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. I passed, Officer Lee, please remove the weapons from Chief Chioffi.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no.
What?
Not Officer Lee, he, he, it has to be through the captain.
Someone needs to do it.
Well, hold on a second, it has to be through the captains.
Alright.
Okay, the, the next resolution is for an officer in charge, and I understand that there is, um, going to be a request for a change of the name. Ed?
We're going with him.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Lieutenant, lieutenant.
Resolution 212, appointment of an officer in charge for Inglewood Police Department, you wanted to make a change?
Oh, you want just, uh, say.
It's gonna be Hill, right? You're fine with Lieutenant Hill, right?
That's, okay.
Propose that amendment. Just, just say Lieutenant David Hill, I propose the amendment.
Okay, just propose. Do a motion?
Everyone understand?
Understand.
This resolution is amended to appoint Lieutenant David Hill as the officer in charge.
Wait, are you looking at resolution 212?
Yeah.
Because it just, um, it says captain, can you repeat?
Yeah, we're changing.
It's, um, Emily.
Lieutenant David Hill.
Emily, who is the most senior ranking officer who does not have any charges?
Lieutenant David Hill is the most senior officer in the depart, we have two captains, they presently have some charges arising out of the tapes. So the next one in line, based upon longevity, is Lieutenant, Lieutenant David Hill.
Okay, and is that the reason for the change?
That's right. That's a recommendation, yeah.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
So moved, second.
Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Okay, um, we have to work with the captains, and we check each other.
Do I do that now?
No.
Can I continue?
Yeah, I'm not saying it.
Okay, okay, not this next.
Officer Lee?
One second. Okay. Can we fly through the rest of this, Dan?
Can we, can we have a 213?
Yes, let's do 213, please.
Authorizing in, resolution 213, authorizing increase in not-to-exceed amount for special counsel Eric Bernstein. I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
214, authorized clerk to advertise for DPW Laborer.
So moved, second.
Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Resolution 215, reject bid for leave pickup and transportation, need motion?
So moved, second, second.
Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
216, authorized motor vehicle auction services with Bergen County.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
217, award 2018 NJTLT, DLT roadway improvement projects Irving Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson's a versa? E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
218, award administration contract to Mazur Consulting PA for 2018 NJDOT roadway project.
So moved, second.
Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes. Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
219, authorized tax appeal block 130 lot 23.
So moved, second.
Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O? Oh, I'm sorry, recuse? M part?
Yes.
Whoa. 220.
Two recus, two recus, I gotta keep track.
I did, I have it, I have it on the.
Okay.
220, transfer liquor license 021633007011.
So moved, second.
Wait, discussion, who's the applicant on the, uh, transfer of liquor license, um.
With the central kitchen?
Central kitchen, going to, uh, Brownston. Councilperson's a versa?
Yes.
E part?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
M part?
Yes.
Whoa. Point of order?
Yeah, water man, I'd like to make a motion to dismiss any charges against Chief Chioffi, so we could wrap that up and not have any more legal bills or fees or anything else to do with it.
No, wait. Well, here, here's the thing, um, there's charges pending, and you're a deliberative body, so you actually need to hear facts and law and a recommendation from a hearing officer that we disappointed, so you can't just dismiss charges, because then you're, you're very delicate, and actually, at that point.
Second.
You can't do it.
It's not, we're not taking it.
I told you, excuse me, excuse me, I told you before that motions to dismiss the charges without having considered appropriate evidence and all that other stuff are just, it's just.
I see, I see Ms. Norton out there waving her hands at you, Ed.
Okay, thank you, thank you, we don't need any more interruptions.
We are out.
Ed, I'm sorry, it's an improper motion. It's an improper motion, you can't do it.
That's, that's an improper.
Why, why is it improper?
Well, because you need to hear deliberation.
Because you are, you, you are making a decision when you have a council member deliberately not here, okay? I understand what you want to do, it is not proper. The borough, the borough needs to take responsibility for the things that they have done, I'm just, I'm just, sorry, I'm not really allowed.
You're gonna create more liability against the borough.
No, there's liability already.
But, it's not funny, but you're not, you're gonna create more liability against the borough by dismissing these charges.
Against the borough by who? There's already a law.
You don't have the right to do that.
Yeah, we have a right.
It's not, it's, listen, let, let's just hear me out, it's not much different than what we did for, uh, one of the captains with the lieutenant bureau. None of us agreed with that settlement. Excuse me, we spent, we spent thousands and thousands of dollars on, on that hearing officer, which this council refused to listen to. So, I, I told, I said this before, I'm saying it again, I don't, I'm done spending money. I think it's wrong what happened, I'd like to move on, I'd like to save the taxpayer dollars.
Emails?
Everybody, everybody in this council, not one person agreed with that settlement that we made. Yet we all voted for it because it was in the best interest to wrap it up and get it done for the town. Every one of us, every one of us.
I, I think, I think all these situations are very different from each other. Uh, we, we never had something so egregious as this. So why don't we do this, let, let's, let, let, yeah, I mean, we can't do this.
Actually.
No, it's, it's, yeah, but it's an improper motion.
I, I did call Jeff.
We're not, we're not taking it.
And I'm expecting a phone call from them.
You called Jeff, like Jiffy Pop, or Jeff, like who'd you call?
I actually called the risk manager.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Have you told them all the facts?
Who said I'm not authorized? Really?
Alright, look, it's been a, it's been a long, so, just hold on a second.
They wanted some clarity as to what is going on.
So they, um, yeah. Guys, it's been a very, very long day. I like to, I like to end meetings on the same day they began.
Motion.
And we're pumping up.
Wait, so a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty days they had, a hundred and twenty days they had.
I'm not even, I'm not looking at Robert's rules. I'm doing a proper motion on them.
Officer Lee, can you, can you, can you only just stop?
I just, sorry.
May I adjourn?
May I adjourn the meeting?
We're not done, we, we have old business and new business. No, you cannot adjourn, mayor.
No, we're good.
We have on the agenda old and new business. We have to discuss. A motion in a second, and you, you're refusing to take a vote?
No, we're not voting, we're not voting on it. We're not voting on an improper motion, okay?
Okay.
Alright, everything's gonna get sorted out, I promise you, it's gonna take a little time.
Wait, wait, the meeting's not adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn pending.
What do you mean, there's old business and new business? I have something to say, committee report, we're not done yet. No, no, I actually, excuse me, no, sir, talk to my room. I have something to say to you. I, I think the hypocrisy that you talk about, about saying, uh, non-disparaging things to people is pretty ridiculous, okay? And I'm gonna call you out on it because you and your wife attacked me and Korean people on this WeChat group of ninety-one, and you know what? You, you don't think that should be.
That's what we're talking about here?
He, he, I gave him this out to the press.
I'm done, baby, so sorry. Alright, look, sorry.
He talked really badly about Korean people in this town, he, he tried to divide Taiwanese and Chinese.